Good evening.
Good evening, Councilman, what's going on?
I get it, how are you?
Doing well.
Hear that?
Let Felipe know he's on Broadway over there. He's right on Broadway.
Hello? No, I'm making myself. Council President McBride?
Yes.
Okay, are you ready to call the meetings order?
Yeah, I am, just, I was just having a problem logging on to this iPad when I don't get the, as other council members have, or have, I had to call Mr. Cruz again, just to get that link sent over to us, because you're putting it on the, uh, agenda, and you can't click on to it that, in that manner. Alrighty, um, let me, let me join from my, from my iPad, and I'll be right with you. I'm switching to device, because I need to. Alrighty. This meeting is being called to order. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, pursuant to Public Laws 1975, Chapter 231. This agenda is complete to the extent known and was sent to the Trenton Times, posted on the First School Board and Board in the City Hall, filed in the City Clerk's Office, and posted on the City of Trenton's website. Formal action will be taken. Roll call, Ms. Carter.
Councilwoman Caldwell Wilson?
Present.
Councilman Harrison?
Present.
Councilman Mashad is, is absent. Councilman Rodriguez is absent. Councilwoman Vaughn? Councilwoman Vaughn? Councilwoman Wilkins?
Present.
Council President McBride?
Present. I would like for the directors to be called this evening, please.
I'm sorry?
I would like for the directors to be called.
Oh. Mr. Cruz is absent. Mr. Cherry?
Present.
Mr. Liston? Mr. Bridges? Mr. Bridges?
Present. Good afternoon.
Mr. Wilson?
Present.
Mr. Douglas?
Good afternoon, President.
Daniels?
Good afternoon, President.
Dr. Lopez?
I'm present, good evening.
Mr. Ontario, Terry?
Good evening, I'm present.
Ms. Richardson? Ms. Richardson? Ms. Richardson? Mr. Lavenberg?
Present.
Is Mr. Cologie present? Is Mr. Ed, is Mr. Edward Cologie present?
He's present.
Oh, Mr. Cologie, I didn't have him on here.
Councilwoman Vaughn has joined the meeting.
Okay.
And we may, we may start with the ordinance, the second reading for public hearing.
We have a report from the Clerk's Office for Approval of a Raffle Application. Robert Wood Johnson, University of Hamilton, to hold a on-premise 50-50 raffle on April the 27th, 2022. You have a second?
I don't think we need to second it, because those are to be voted on on Thursday. What are we doing here?
Oh, I see, okay. And the ordinance is scheduled for public hearing on, excuse me, on Thursday also.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes.
And then we have the Resolution 22-124. The Resolution requesting that the New Jersey State Legislature and the Mercer County Board of Commissioners revise the redistricting laws relative to the appointment of Board Commissioners, and an increase in the number of Mercer County Board of Election Members from four to six persons. Necessary budget increases while ensuring local and native representation, reflecting the diverse racial and ethnic demographic of the municipalities they serve.
I would like to roll call that.
Then we have 22-125, a resolution setting.
Wait a minute. Mr. Rivera? We spoke to this earlier, you need to get a better system than this, because we're not able to understand, and there's a lot of interference.
Uh, Council President?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I wanted to speak, but I was on mute, pertaining to the last resolution. I just wanted to give.
Which resolution is that?
Sorry, the one that was roll-called about expanding the Mercer County Board of Elections.
Okay, go right ahead.
Uh, yes, I wanted to speak to that, because I wanted to ensure that our municipality and the electorate understand what's being proposed and what's currently in place. So what's currently in place, um, is the Mercer County Board of Elections. They have a very important role that they play in government, and certainly their role in impacting and our elections. So one of the roles that they play every 10 years around the United States Census process is to redistrict our electoral ward lines. So we did that this year, coming off the 2020, year 2020, and the 2020 census. So once the data was received, and it understood how, when we got the data, that kind of, the metrics that gave us some indication how our population increased or decreased, and how that, and what it looks like across all the four wards. So, we discovered, when we were participating in the various, uh, uh, meetings, and, and, and they came up with different scenarios. The surveyors, the map surveyors, the population surveyors, they came up with how our wards should be redistricted to impact, to ensure that proper reputation, voting representation, making certain that certain candidates, mainly council members, aren't impacted negatively. Making certain that certain, um, certain populations or voting blocks were not impacted, meaning certain voting blocks were strengthened or weakened as a result of changing the district lines. And of course, you change the district lines, you also change where potentially the polls where you vote. So, certain scenarios were put forward, and we found out that City of Trenton did not have any representation on that board. So, uh, so, you know, going forward, we would like to see representation on that board, particularly when our electoral, our electoral districts are being impacted. So right now, uh, they have four commissioners. Two are appointed by the Democratic Party, and two are appointed by the Republican Party. So we're asking the state legislature to amend their laws, um, and we're asking the Mercer County Board Commissioners to properly put forward a, um, a resolution and/or ordinance to increase two seats that will potentially, hopefully, um, uh, give us an opportunity to diversify that board, and ensure that the City of Trenton has proper representation, uh, based on our demographic and our ethnic makeup. Right now on the board, it's, nobody is from Trenton. That's domiciled residents of Trenton. No one that's part of our electorate. And certainly, the board does not reflect the demographic of the city. Uh, right now, it's, I believe, two white males, and I believe two white women. So we're asking, hopefully, between the Mercer County Board of Commissioners and our state legislators, state legislative representatives, and the leaders of the two parties. Uh, I believe it's Janet Marinoff, or the Mercer County Democratic Chair, and Lisa Richard, the Republican, I mean, Republican Chair. Uh, see it fit to appoint two residents of Trenton, one potentially African-American, and one Latino. So that's all I'm going to say about that. I, I know Council President, Vice President Caldwell Wilson just decided to roll-call it. I just, I'm just curious as to the reason why, and any questions that she may have, because the question can be very impactful, and I'm sure a lot of other people will probably want to hear those questions or concerns. Uh, you know, it may not, and we have an opportunity to examine that question, uh, over the next two days before Thursday vote. Um, I would ask any of my colleagues, and particularly Vice Chair Caldwell Wilson, if she has any questions or concerns about the legislation.
Thank you, Ms. Penny Carter, you may move on.
Uh, Council President, she can't speak? I'm asking Council Vice President a question about her, why, why she.
I have nothing to say at this time.
Okay.
Ms. Penny Carter, you may move on.
Okay, Resolution 22-125. A resolution setting forth an interpretive statement for the referendum question regarding the proposed change of the City of Trenton's school district from type, from a type 1 to a type 2 district.
I would like that roll-called also.
Okay, uh, Council President, may I speak on that as well?
Yes.
Uh, that is a, um, I guess, Mr. Cologie can, is Mr. Cologie on the line?
Yes, he is.
Um, can you speak on why this is necessary to put forward?
Yes, Council already passed a resolution putting the issue on a referendum of whether, um, Trenton should change to a type 2 district, which would be a district elected by the voters as opposed to appointed by the mayor. There's an additional requirement, um, in addition to the resolution, putting it on the ballot, that we have to submit an interpretive statement. And basically, it's just a statement that explains what is being done. And just to read it quickly, it said, "If passed, this question would change the manner by which the Trenton Board of Education is selected, by having such members elected directly by the voters of the city, a type 2 district, as opposed to being appointed by the mayor, a type 1 district. The Board of School estimate would be eliminated, and future bonding for capital projects would have to be approved by public referendum, and would be based upon the credit of the school district as opposed to the city. Further, the size of the Board of Ed would increase from seven members to nine, and the first election of members of the Board of Education would take place in April 2023." So it's that typical little statement that you see when you go into the voting booth, that's usually under a referendum, that kind of explains it in a more easily discernible fashion for people that might not understand the, uh, the intricacies of the referendum language itself. And we're obligated to submit that, so we're submitting something to supplement what we've already passed.
Thank you, Council President. And, uh, Mr. Cologie?
Ms. Penny Carter, you may move on.
Uh, 20, uh, Resolution 22-127. Resolution appointing Deborah M. Fox as Chief Tax Assessor for the City of Trenton from July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2026.
You may continue.
Is this going to be consent or roll-call?
If no one has any questions, it will be consent.
Okay, Resolution 22-128. Resolution awarding a contract through a fair and open process in accordance with NJSA 19:44A-20.4 at SEC to BRT Technologies, Inc., to provide cloud-based mod 4 cam computer software services for a period of one year from January 1, 2022 to December 31, 2022, in an amount not to exceed $32,500, pursuant to RFP number 2-22-08B.
If no one have any questions, it will be part of the consent.
Okay, 22-129. A resolution authorizing and directing the foreclosure of 43 tax sale certificates totaling $1,503,809.99 pursuant to the NREM Foreclosure Act.
Roll-call.
Okay, 22-130. A resolution authorizing the City of Trenton to issue a refund, to issue refunds totaling $16,720.40 on 15 properties.
Um, Ms. Penny Carter, I would like to, um, is Mr. Cruz here, or Mr. Cherry, is going to be sitting in place for Mr. Cruz this evening?
Uh, I'm representing Mr. Cruz this evening, Madam President.
Okay, great. Uh, Mr. Cherry, I was going down the list of refunds, and I was kind of, uh, confused here in reference to CoreLogic and Wells Fargo. Why is an LLC being determined as 100% disabled? And why would?
Excuse me, can, can we mute numbers 8995, 609, 638, 8995? I get they were muted, okay, thank you.
And Wells Fargo, uh, 100% disabled vet exemption. I, I need to explain to me, I need to see some paperwork that, uh, says that CoreLogic is a veteran, and the paperwork giving them the authority to get a exemption as a vet, and I definitely would like to see the paperwork for Wells Fargo, because I'm not understanding how a institution can get 100% disabled vet exemption. So if I could please get that information, um, before Thursday, I'd appreciate it.
I will make sure we get you a memo before Thursday.
Alrighty, thank you. I, I would like to see, I would like, I don't want a memo. I have a memorandum here. I would like to see the paperwork that deems them a disabled vet.
I believe it, it involves the occupant of the property, but I will ensure that you get the backup paperwork with a memo explaining that paperwork.
Right, because even if it's, yeah, because even if it's an occupant, if CoreLogic owns the property, then there, there, there is no, uh, uh, veteran's exemption, and if Wells Fargo owns the property, there is no, uh, veterans exemption. So please get that paperwork to me, and time enough for Mr. Cologie to look it over, and be able to interpret it, and give me a, um, a legal opinion on that.
Absolutely.
And, uh, Council President? Can I also, um, add to that, um, request? Uh, Wells Fargo has been in the press lately, and, um, uh, there was some litigation that they settled around discrimination and redlining, and, uh, and, uh, and denying, uh, black African-Americans mortgages at an alarming rate. So, in number. So I would just like to know, uh, the race of the owner of that property in CoreLogic.
I, I need to, um.
Well, they, rather they have the minority? Or rather, yes, I want to know the, the race and ethnic, um, category of that property.
So Ms. Penny Carter, will you put this down as a roll-call for now?
Yes, ma'am. Okay. Um, 22-131. Resolution authorizing assignment of 156 tax sale certificates totaling $2,619,747.28 pursuant to NJSA 54:5-113.
If no one have any questions, um, I'm gonna have that roll-call.
Okay. 22-172. Amending Resolution 22-074 to the Law Offices of Riker, Danzig, Drier, Island, and Befetti, LLP, to contract the funding account number.
So, Mr. Cherry, do you want to explain, uh, what we're doing with, uh, with Riker and Danzig?
Council President, if I may, I think I could answer that for you.
Yes, go right ahead, Mr. Bridges.
Yeah, so essentially, this, this firm's contract was passed along with another firm that's coming. Um, they do work, as you may recall, in connection with Trenton Waterworks, and specifically, the litigations going on, one with the P, one with the surrounding townships. The purpose of it coming back before your day is because the funding source, i.e. the account number, was incorrect. We're simply correcting the funding source that those firms have paid from. So the amount of the contract is the same, the scope of the work remains the same. It's just correcting the funding source that we need to do to properly have this, have them paid properly under the laws.
If there's no, uh, so you're just transferring it to the water department, so it could be funded from the, uh, from the water department?
Correct.
Uh, does anyone want this roll-call, or can it be a part of the consent agenda? Make it part of the consent agenda.
Thank you. 22-173. Amending Resolution 22-075 to the Law Offices of Weber Dow, LLC, to divide the approved funds between two account numbers.
Uh, Mr. Bridges, is that the same scenario?
My apologies, I was on mute, that's correct, Council President, it's the same scenario. Simply correcting the funding source, the scope of work remains the same. The amount of the contract remains the same, the hourly rate remains the same. It's simply correcting that Scribner's error in the funding source.
Uh, uh, Council President, I just have a question.
Go right ahead, Councilwoman Vaughn.
So, uh, we have, um, an attorney assigned to the law, Mr. Bridges, right?
I didn't understand what you said, I'm sorry.
So, so these two attorneys represent, you know, litigation associated with, and, you know, DEP for our water, um, utility. And there's another attorney, in-house attorney, that we hired also, that supposedly works. Is she under your department? Is it Maria, I have to get her name?
All attorneys work for the City of Trenton under the City's Law Department.
I, no, no, but I, I didn't ask that. I'm asking about a particular attorney that's currently assigned in-house to cover legal matters over at Trenton Waterworks.
Yes, Ms. Maria Kelly is an attorney in the City's Law Department that is, um, assigned to handle water issues, but she also handles issues outside of the water department. But she is the person that is the point person for any legal matters that emanate from the water department, and is to go between, between myself and our outside counsel. That is correct.
Okay, so, um, these two attorneys, so what is the, um, thinking? Um, what's the rationale for moving these two particular, um, contracts, legal contracts, under the Department of Water Sewer, when the law department generally, uh, you know, the water sewer, again, is not a separate entity, it's a department of the city, and the law department, uh, supports every department of the city. So are we starting to, um, if Public Works have a legal issue, we have a lot of legal issues over at the police department, so are we going to start moving their legal, uh, their legal, um, expenses over to the individual departments? Or, what's the rationale for doing this?
Madam President, if I may?
Yes, Mr. Bridges.
That, that was Mr. Collins, he could chime in. To sure answer your question is no, and I will ask Mr. Collins to state his position on this.
Yes, I just wanted to clarify that the difference here, Councilwoman, is that we are, um, setting it to a different fund. The utility has its own budget. So when we move this account number, it's very different than moving from, uh, for example, administration and the Department of Law. All of that funding comes from the current fund. This, these two issues are being put, the first one in whole, and the second in part, to a water utility line, so it is coming from a budget outside of the city's budget. And that's why this is so necessary.
Okay, um, I want to challenge that, uh, because the water department. Okay, um, I want to challenge that, uh, because the water department does not have its own budget. I don't know where, has that been defined by DCA? Because there's no, no department has its own budget, except, uh, uh, there's no entity of the city of Trenton. Let me just be clear. No department has its own budget. There's one, there's one budget, there's one, I, I'm, I'm speaking, please. I am, uh, uh, War- Department of Water Sewer, not, not to my knowledge. I want to see the legal documentation, uh, Mr. Koloji, please, uh, take notes on this, that I want to see some legal documentation that has been, uh, a pass that says the Department of Water Sewer has its own budget. Uh, that's not, um, calculated under the city of Trenton's budget. Because if the city, if, if, if the water utility has its own budget, then it should be able to have its own bonding capability. So, so, uh, the only other entity in this city, three entities that has its own bonding capability and has its own budget, is the, is the Trenton Parking Authority, the, um, the school board, due to school board estimates, but no department, or my knowledge, has its own budget and has the capabilities of a entity that has its own operations. So I think that's a misnomer, and I need that to be verified by our legal department. And yes, roll call that, please.
Um, just to be cl- clear, Ma- Madam President, Councilwoman, uh, the department does not have its own budget, but the water utility-
That's what you said.
The water utility has its own budget, as does the sewer utility.
No, 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 again, we don't have, we, we don't have a separate water utility. It's never been created, if council, this, this city never voted on that. Right now, it's still the Department of Water and Sewer. We don't have a water authority, we don't have a water utility. That is the Department of Water and Sewer. So I want, Mr. Koloji, you come back with verification of that, unless somebody did something that they should not have done. But right now, as far as I'm concerned, there's one, there's three budgets, there's only one city budget. And it has, what, uh, nine departments? And Department of Water Sewer is one of them.
They have ten departments right now.
Ten departments, okay, very well, yep. And the Department of Water Sewer is one of them. So, Mr. Koloji, please verify that properly with, uh, DCA or whomever. And, um, because there's some misrepresentation here to the public, to try to make our utility-
What's the misrepresentation? Specifically, what's the misrepresentation?
Shut up, Ma- Wes, please.
I asked a question, you're, you're putting accusations out there, misrepresentation. What's the misrepresentation?
Uh, excuse me?
The misrepresentation is, and I'm not just speaking to-
Specifically.
Specifically, that the water utility is-
Specifically, specifically, what's the misrepresentation?
That's what I just said, that the water utility is its own entity, and it's not. It's a department of the city of Trenton. So you tell me, Mr. Bridges, since you're the law director, so you tell me what's the difference between a department and an entity, a legal entity? Come on, tell me.
Your question doesn't make sense, a part, a, a, a department, a legal entity is a filed legal entity. I don't understand your question. The water department has a budget that's funded by five towns that pay-
I'm not asking you, I'm asking the council attorney.
Point of, point of order, point of order. You've asked Mr. Koloji to give you a legal opinion, and that's what we'll wait on, Mr. Koloji.
So, but Council President, I just want to be clear.
We're not gonna go back and forth.
I'm not going back and forth.
Please, we're not gonna do that.
I'm not going back and forth, Council President, with all due respect. So again, the difference between, we have other public water utili- our utility is a public water utility that's still fully owned, wholly owned by the residents and taxpayers of the city. And it's not a, it's not a utility, it's not an authority. And it does not have its own budget. And whoever is misrepresenta- misrepresenting that needs to be checked. So, so, Mr. Koloji, you get me that documentation to check whoever is trying to misrepresent our water utility, our, our, our depart- the Department of Water Utility, Department of Water and Sewer as a utility and or authority, or operating as a separate entity of the city, and it's not. Never been passed by that, okay? The referendum in twenty-ten-
He will follow you, Councilwoman.
The referendum of the city of Trenton, the voters have spoken that that utility is publicly owned, utility and operated. It is a Department of Water and Sewer, period. And, Mr. Koloji, you get me that documentation. Thank you.
Madam President, if it's helpful, I can cite the, uh, resolutions to-
Mister, Mister Cherry, what we're gonna do is we're gonna roll call twenty-two dash one seventy-two and twenty-two dash one seventy-three, Ms. Penny Carter. And then we're gonna move on to, uh, one thirty-three.
Okay, resolutions-
One thirty, one thirty-three, I think is part of, uh, is part-
Uh, resolutions one thirty-two, one thirty-three, one thirty-four, one thirty-five, one thirty-six, thirty, one thirty-seven and one thirty-eight need to be moved to the end of the meeting since the executive section has been moved to the end of the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so now we're on a resolution twenty-two dash one thirty-nine.
Can, Council President, if I may?
Ms. Penny Carter-
Yes, ma'am.
For, um, because these are all, um, uh, settlements, so can you put down by them, although they will be exec, they still need to be roll called, so just put down before we move any further, um, label all of them as roll call because they have to be voted individually because they're settlements.
Correct. Uh, Council President, I just wanted to bring your attention that we do have outside counsel on the call that are prepared to present. I didn't know if it was your pleasure to move it up to the beginning so we could address those with outside-
I didn't know that you had, I didn't know that you had outside counsel. You didn't, um, make that clear to me, and I thought they were in-house. That's why we moved the, um, we had moved it to the end. Um, Mr. Bridges, uh, we would have went through those first. Alrighty, so, um, let us just finish going through the, uh, the docket and it, and just let it, because we're already halfway through the docket, Mr. Bridges.
I'll, I'll, I'll text Council and let them know, I'll contact them, and it's time for them to jump on.
Yes, please, mhm. So, Ms. Penny Carter, could you, um, uh, call out the numbers that will be roll called under settlements, twenty-two dash one thirty-two?
Uh, twenty-two dash one thirty-two, twenty-two dash one thirty-three, twenty-two dash one thirty-four, twenty-two dash one thirty-five, twenty-two dash one thirty-six, twenty-two dash one thirty-seven, and twenty-two dash one thirty-eight.
Okay. Alrighty, we may continue to, uh, Department of Public Works.
Twenty-two dash one thirty-nine, resolution awarding a contract through a fair and open process in accordance with NJ SA nineteen, colon, forty-four A, dash, twenty-point-four, et cetera, Greenman Patterson, Inc., for engineering services for preparation of plans, specifications, and inspections for the reconstruction of West State Street in pro- between Prospect Street and Parkside Avenue, uh, NJ, uh, New Jersey Department of Transportation, lo- local aid project in an amount not to exceed forty-three thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars for a period of one year from April eighth, twenty-twenty-two, to April seventh, twenty-twenty-three, per specifications under an RFP twenty-twenty-two dash six.
I just want to say that this is hilarious because, uh, Mr. Uh, Anatiri was asked at the last meeting, uh, did we have inspectors out on the site? And he said in his answer, and I, I would appreciate if many, if Ms. Penny Carter, uh, got those, uh, get that recording, uh, for his reply. Um, he stated that the inspectors came with the contract. Anytime there's any, uh, work being done, um, from the Department of Transportation or from X, Y, Z, that the inspectors are included in those contracts. And now today, this was just last, uh, last week, and now today, he have, uh, a resolution on here to, uh, hire an inspector for, uh, uh, for this site. I just would like for Ms. Penny Carter to, uh, tomorrow, to pull those minutes down and give me Mr. Anatiri's response to this, to the question that was posed at the last council meeting on the, on the, uh, fifth of April, I believe it was.
And Council President, may I speak to the thing? In addition to Mr. An- Anatiri comments that you just, um, well articulated, we also asked him to provide us reports of the, the current inspector who's out in the field now, providing, is, he, he hired an in-house inspector who he said is out there alongside the, the contractors and, and their inspectors, uh, writing up the reports on behalf of the city. And he said he was gonna send us those reports, and I haven't received them yet. So, um, is Mr. An- I mean, is Mr. Anatiri or Mr. Colin Cherry could speak to, when can the council expect to get the updated reports on the current projects that are underway in the city?
It's good evening, Council, Council President?
Yes, go right ahead, Mr. An- Anatiri.
Yeah, Councilwoman Vaughn, thank you for the question. First of all, the first question that the Council President said that I said the way it is, I'm gonna wait till tomorrow for her to see the tape or whatever it is out there. And the second thing you say you ask about the inspectors to give you reports. If you know the report of what is going on in the city, we have, we do have that. I will make that available to you by tomorrow before the next council.
Well, well, I want to be, you said everything what Council President stated. And also, again, you also stated that you were gonna share the reports of the work that's currently underway, uh, the street, um, paving projects and the curb paving, I mean, the curb, um, rebuilds that's going on on Sidestreet Avenue. You said your, your quality assurance manager or your inspector has those reports, and you said you're gonna send them to us. So you, I haven't received them. So I want particular reports, I don't just want any old reports. I want the reports related to those, um, street, uh, paving and, uh, curb enhancement projects. Okay? Inspection report that says that these vendors are doing a quality job and they're up to code or, or up to, um, uh, they're meeting the target, um, measures of quality assurance.
Okay, Council.
Hmm, that would be roll call one thirty-nine, uh, be roll called waiting, uh, uh, upon the, um, information. So that'll be roll calls. Hopefully, we have the information before Thursday, and we could, uh, remove it if we have the information.
Okay. Twenty-two dash one forty, is a resolution authorizing the city of Trenton Department of Breakfast Lunch for a minimum eighteen hundred children resident of the city of Trenton.
Um, um, can I ask, um, Director Richardson a question?
Council President, this is Maria Richardson.
Hey, Ms. Richardson, I got a question for you. Um, um, last year with the, um, with the menu, how did the, how did the menu work out when we, um, when we added, um, water to the, uh, to the children's, uh, breakfast and their lunch? How did that work out for you?
Um, very well. Very well. At the beginning, um, we had a, um, kind of an impasse with the vendor because it was not added, um, to the, to the menu, right? But they didn't have any problem providing the water.
Okay, and so how is the menu looking this year? Have you seen the menu yet, or we're just accepting the funding?
We are accepting the funding, but when we prepare the application to apply, uh, we need to submit a menu. Um, usually, that menu is then revised a couple of times, uh, but we are mandated to apply, to, to submit a menu when we do the application for funding. Um, so, uh, between one year and the other, we try to adjust the menu, uh, when children do not like certain items and there is a equivalent in terms of nu- uh, nutritional value, um, uh, alternative. And so, um, this year, actually, the menu will be very similar to the one last year because we didn't have a lot of pushback from, from our children for, with that menu. However, the menu, it, it's basically, um, set on stun, I would say, just when we put the R, the, the bid out, uh, for the vendor. But this is just the first phase, the phase of applying and accepting for the grant.
Thank you so much, Maria.
My pleasure.
Council President, may I ask a question about that?
Yes, go right ahead.
So, um, is Maria the health officer, or is that Dr. Lopez?
It's Dr. Lopez, but the, she, she can explain that the state is the one that, the state dietitian is the one that looks over the menu that's submitted for our children. But Maria could explain that process to you.
Okay, but, but the, the state di- dietitian, th- does she report into our health, off our health department or to the, the, the recreation director?
Council President, may I answer that question?
Yes, alright.
I, I want Dr. Lopez to answer it. Dr. Lopez?
The grant, it comes through the, the-
I know, I, I understood, but the food and health, uh, of, of the children and the quality of the nutrition must go through the health department, correct? I'm just asking Dr. Lopez the question.
Hi, Council President, can I respond?
Yes, go right ahead, uh, Dr. Lopez.
Yeah, thank you. How are you ladies doing this evening? So I will say that, um, uh, Maria and I work hand in hand, and her, the health officer is Yvette Graffy Cooper, and she's also our nutritionist. So she works hand in hand with the State Department of Health as lo- as well as the Department of Recreation. So they work hand in hand, so she was inclusive of this plan. So my department was involved in that. So Maria just speaking to her because she was asked of that question. And, and so we have been involved in the, the, that process.
Okay, I just want to make sure that the license authority has approved the nutritional value of those lunches.
Absolutely.
It's licensed, it's in your department. Thank you.
Absolutely, you're welcome.
Um, uh, I would, uh, congratulations, Dr. Lopez, on your son graduating from the Air Force. I didn't have the opportunity to congratulate you and your family.
Well, thank you so much, Council Pres- thank you so much, Council President.
Mm-hmm, and thank you, Maria.
My pleasure, Council President.
Alright, this will be a cons- this will be a part of the consent agenda.
Okay. Twenty-two dash one forty-one, a resolution rejecting bids received for cleaning services at two eighteen North Broad Street, Trenton, New Jersey, zero eight six one eight, for the city of Trenton, Department of Health and Human Services, Division of Health and Community Relations and Social Services, of bid twenty-two-one dash sixty.
If there's no, uh, questions, this could be a part of the consent agenda. You may continue.
Twenty-two dash one forty-two, resolution authorizing payment for a contract with Kaplan Group LLC, Medical Home Pharmacy, eight twenty-eight North Olden Avenue, Trenton, New Jersey, zero eight six three eight, which was awarded on an emergency basis to provide COVID-nineteen tests, licensing, training, and reporting for the Department of Health personnel to render services to the city of Trenton's residents.
Uh, Council President, can we roll call that, please?
Yes, definitely. Um, you may continue.
A resolution twenty-two dash one forty-four, a resolution accepting a bid and awarding a contract to Bill Brown and Company for printing services for Trenton Municipal Court for a period of two years from March eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two, to December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three, in an amount not to exceed one hundred and twenty thousand dollars at sixty thousand dollars per year under a bid, um, twenty-two-one dash sixty-one.
If there's no questions, this could be a part of the consent agenda. You may continue.
Twenty-two dash one forty-five, resolution authorizing the execution of purchase money mortgage, mortgage documents between the city of Trenton and Richie Davis- mortgage documents between the City of Trenton and Richie Davis for the sale and purchase of city-owned property in the amount of forty-two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Can you read that again? I can't see it.
Resolution authorizing the execution of purchase mon- money mortgage documents between the City of Trenton and Richie Davis for the sale and purchase of city-owned property in the amount of forty-two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, um, is that under, um, Council President, may I speak on this? Can we roll this one, please?
Can you do what?
The roll call. So the purchase money program can uh is uh uh Mr. C. Daniels um on the line? DeAndre Daniels on the line?
Council President, I'm on the line.
Yes, you may go ahead, Mr. Daniels.
The purchase money program, um, can you explain this and and the qualifications of this particular resident? Or are they a resident?
Ricky is not a resident. Um, he hails from Willingboro, New Jersey.
Okay, um, I wanna roll call that and I just wanna comment that the the purchase money, the purchase money program, uh mortgage program. Uh, can you uh just describe that program? Is it similar to the first time home buyer program or it's like uh offering under giving folks a a lift and becoming homeowners? Can you just kinda give the the public an overview of this offering through the Housing and Economic Development Department of the City of Trenton?
Sure, yes, ma'am. Um, Sally Samuels is on also, so if I miss something, Ms. Samuels, I'm asking you to speak to uh whatever I um I don't get. But the difference between, if you will, uh, a a first timer or an individual able to go on the open market is that um this is uh unique to our um auction. If an individual uh uh bids on a particular property um pursuant to the auction that we have under the in the city, um, under the PMM, they have an opportunity to uh have the city secure a mortgage that would last essentially no longer, I believe, than five years with ten percent down and um some of the attributes of it is if a person could not uh obtain uh vis a vis uh credit or something else that 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 might render them unable to secure on the open market, the purchase money mortgage allows them that opportunity at a slightly higher interest rate um because of the city obviously carrying um the the loan.
Okay, so why would we carry a loan for a um for for a non-resident lives in Willingboro?
Council President, if I may, this is Sally Samuel, if I can clarify that, I can answer that question for the Councilwoman.
I'm speaking, but I'm, I haven't even finished my question.
Oh, I'm, I apologize, Councilwoman Vaughn. I thought you were done and I just wanted to answer your question.
No, I was still uh, yeah, I was still conversing with Mr. Daniels, who who's head of the Economic Development Department. Who's head of the Economic Development Department. So, so I wanna know why why would we, does the program permit us to go and fund a non-resident instead of residents who are also interested in buying property? Because I sent a lot of folks to 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 your department. Uh, I spent two over the past couple of weeks to your department interested in properties in Trenton and buying them. And then I'm hearing that you're giving offerings and programs to fund residents outside the city. And I'm sure that the municipality of Willingboro has the same program. So can you answer?
So what what I will do, uh, if it's okay with Council President through you to you, um, is I'll adhere to our attorney, Ms. Sally Samuels, because I just don't have that answer, Council President.
Go right in, go right ahead, Ms. Samuels.
Thank you so very much, Council President. Uh, Councilwoman Vaughn, um, the program is only as the director indicated, specific to the auction. Also, by virtue of the conditions and terms which council uh approves, um, the program is um is open to everyone. However, it's only specific to properties that have a five-year homeowner restriction on the property. So not understanding the fact that Ricky Davis now lives in Willingboro, the intent, and when we underwrite the applications, because there is an application that goes along with this process, the intent must be that they're going to move into the city and live in the property for five years. If they do not move into the city and live into the property, right, we keep their deposit. Whatever payments they have made, if we discover later they're not living in the property, well, they would forfeit to the city and we would retake the property by virtue of our deed restrictions, which we include uh in the deed upon closing. So um I understand that you may have referred people to our program, but the program is specific to the auction because it's only authorized through the uh the uh the um Local Land and Buildings Law, which is NJSA forty A colon twelve dash thirteen D. And so we can't offer this program outside of the auction. Now, there are other programs that maybe other uh uh that um people can't benefit from if they're looking to own a home for the first time. But this is not one. This is, this is not um restricted to just first-time home buyers. It's restricted to people who wanna live in Trenton because we're trying to build Trenton up, we're trying to make Trenton a place that people wanna live. And we wanna see these homes revitalized and rehabbed and the neighborhoods revitalized. And so we're trying to attract people. And and by doing so, we're offering the purchase money mortgages to people who may not, as the director indicated, be uh qualified for conventional loans. And so and and I just wanna also clarify that it's not really a loan. What we're doing is saying you can pay us your purchase price over five years. So we're not giving them any money. There's no money leaving the the city's coffers. We're just saying that if you purchase a home for fifty thousand, you paid your ten percent down, uh, you know, which would have been five thousand. Now you can, you can basically pay us to remain in forty-five thousand over five years, but you must pay us six percent interest with that. So it's a win for the city, it's a win for the people because now they have the opportunity at homeownership. We're getting some extra cash, which we need. And, you know, so it's like a partnership that we've created through this program. And I hope that answers your question.
So so so, uh, yes, it does, but it still doesn't negate the fact that Trenton Tonians should have priority. There's plenty of people in Trenton. We have a whole offering in the department. So if somebody, a Trenton Tonia comes into your office and asks for help, purchase, they wanna buy homes in Trenton in their own city that they already live in. And and okay, they may not qualify for the purchasing uh more money mortgage, but certainly you have other programs and offering that you can make that happen. And and so I don't understand why that's not happening. But it also, you didn't speak to the fact that I know Willingboro. I have relatives that live in Willingboro. I know they have a somewhat depressed housing market as well and they have thousands of foreclosures, thousands of boarded boarded up homes in in um Willingboro. So I know the municipality of Willingboro also. Uh, and they have a large uh minority community there as well, working class. So I don't understand, again, why is it that we have to, I think that we, I think your department should work. I gotta see some metrics because I wanna see the the percentage of Trenton Tony who are eligible for uh these these houses, who can, we we can participate. You can get Trenton Tonia to come to those auctions. There there's ways that we could do that to help our citizens become uh homeowners uh instead of blocking them out of it. Um, and I just wanna say, homeownership, we got a high rate of gun violence in the city. And it's and it's programs like this can help alleviate that. It can alleviate poverty, one of the major symptoms of the gun violence. So when we looking at economic inequalities, it this, this is an economic inequality, Ms. Samuels, Ms. Mr. Daniels. So you get to level the playing field. You get to save lives if you get people to own homes. That helps the to close the wealth gap. It helps to defeat poverty and it helps to save lives and get rid of this gun violence and any crime in the inner cities. So you have to do better for our city and our citizens who come to your office, who's looking for you to educate them on all the products and offerings that we have to be able to make them a homeowner, to make them economically viable. So you guys need to get busy. And I don't wanna see, I wanna see more Trenton residents being taken advantage of these programs. And uh first-time home buyer, the the mortgage person program. And if and if and if the auction is your excuse as to why they didn't get to the program and shame on us. City residents deserve to go to that auction for free. We should not have to go to the auction and pay a thousand dollars or whatever. No way should that be an obstacle or hurdle for a city residence to clear. No way. So, Mr. Daniels, you need to make that happen. So, Council President, that's all I have to say. Thank you for now, for now, on this topic.
So, Mr. Um, Mr. Daniels and Ms. Um, and Ms. Sally Samuels, I have a question for you because this is not the first time this has come up. And what my con- I have two concerns here. The first concern is that we talked about who are going to be the monitor of this program because when I think about Willingboro and I think about their housing stock, they have some very good housing stock in Willingboro. And I'm just trying to envision in my own mind where Mr. Davis is living at in Willingboro that he would want to come back and 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 uh purchase a house for you to hold a mortgage and give him the opportunity to pay it off for five years. So I, you know, I'm trying to envision that because I'm just trying to envision if Mr. Daniels lived in a four-bedroom ranch-style home in Willingboro or if he's living in uh an apartment in Willingboro, which you don't see a lot of down there, although there's some, but not many. So I'm just trying to picture that. If this man is in a three-hundred-thousand-dollar home, why would he wanna come and pay forty-two thousand dollars? What comes to my mind is where is the monitor? Who is gonna be monitoring this property to make sure that Mr. Davis is living in the property? Two, if Mr. Davis is not living in the property, then all you, all we're doing is uh allowing the absentee landlords to become bigger and stronger into our community. The reason that our community is uh somewhat literally falling apart is because we have a lot of absentee landlords. They rent this property out. They don't care who they rent it to. And the homeowners are taking a serious beating. So when we say we're holding a property for a man that lives in Willingboro, the first thing that I would like to know, what type of home is Mr. Davis living in in Willingboro? And who is the monitor? Where is the monitor? So ju- just explain to me who is going to monitor this property to see that Mr. Davis license is there, that he's voting in the city, that his children are registered in our charter or public schools? Where is the monitor at? That's what I I would like to know.
Council President, we do that within the department, um, uh Department of Real Estate. Uh, we we absolutely monitor the process. I would also point out, if I could direct you to the provision and the the borrowing um documentation under subsection thirteen default.
I just wanted to know, I just wanna know, Mr. Mr. Daniels, in in real lifetime, who is the monitor? Who's gonna do the monitoring? How is that system going to work? That's what I wanna speak to. Monitoring this, monitoring the property. Who is going to ensure that Mr. Davis license? How long do you give him before his license have to be from um at that address that he has to have a voting record here in the City of Trenton? That the children have to be enrolled into either a chartered school in Trenton or a pub- public school. I I just wanna know how that piece is gonna work.
Right. Go go ahead, uh, Council President, if if I may, through Sally Samuels.
Yeah, go right ahead. Ms. Samuels?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Council President. So um, upon issuance of a certificate of occupancy, that's when the five-year uh time period um begins. Uh, because most of these properties, as you know, they they are not livable at this point. So uh, we give the buyers, the bidders, um, time, uh, uh, twen- twenty, uh, twenty uh twelve months, I'm sorry, to rehab the property and they are eligible for um up to to three um six-month extensions, which they have to show uh reasonable cause in order to get. But let's say that it takes him twenty-four months to rehab the property. Upon issuance of a certificate of occupancy, that time period begins. And as the director indicated, um, our Division of Real Estate, right now, um, we, there are three employees there. I mean, the the department, the division is understaffed and we really need to hire more. I'm just gonna be that candid. But with the three people that are there, um, they're responsible for doing the monitoring. Um, otherwise, I I would, you know, say at some point, we, uh, the more purchase money mortgages we do, at some point, we'll probably, if we don't hire more internally, we'll probably need an outside um uh uh contracted to help us uh do the monitoring. But um, it does happen, we work with our uh Division of Inspection. Um, you know, because they they um uh uh do, you know, are the ones that um do go out and do inspections. So uh through a collaboration of uh Division of Real Estate and our inspections, uh, we're just gonna be performing the monitoring to the best of our ability um uh to ensure that uh Mr. Davis and people like him uh are living in the city, uh, if they have children, they're enrolled in the city, um, schools. Um, and uh, you know, that he's voting here, registered voting, that type of thing. We'll be doing all that we um can possibly do to ensure that. But like I said, um, um, it, you know, as the program grows, we're probably gonna need to add bodies to that division in order for it to be, um, you know, more efficient um monitoring happening, um, or we'll need to contract with an outside entity. And I just have to be very candid about that.
Thank you.
Council President?
No, 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 we're gonna move on to twenty-two dash one forty-six. It's the same type of.
I have another question.
No, we we've already.
No, we haven't.
Yes, we have. We're gonna move on to twenty twenty-two dash one forty-six.
I'll put it in writing.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Twenty-two dash one forty-six. Ms. Penny Carter, Ms. Penny Carter, unmute yourself, please.
That's roll called, right? The Ricky Davis resolution, that's roll called.
Yes, that's roll called.
Twenty-two dash, twenty-two dash one forty-six, resolution authorizing the execution of purchase money mortgage documents between the City of Trenton and Jose Laura for the sale and purchase of city-owned property in the amount of ninety-three thousand six hundred dollars.
Uh, Council President?
Yes.
Uh, is this a city resident or um doc- um, Mr. Daniels?
Permission to speak, Council President?
Yes, go right ahead, Mr. Daniels.
Yes, this is a city resident.
Okay, so what I could say is the difference, I can speak on this. The difference between, I would think, and Ms. Samuels can chime in as to what she thinks. Um, the difference between the advantage for the city and the taxpayers of Trenton, uh, you know, giving this program to a, someone like uh this individual, Jose, I I um versus Mr. Ricky Davis is that Jose currently lives in the City of Trenton. And he is currently contributing to our economy, our local economy. So, well, for the next five years, right? So Mr. Davis, conversely, is not. He's contributing to Willingboro's economy over the next five years or the next year or two until he starts rehabbing the home. So why would we not wanna give it to Trentonians who live here? Who will contribute? Who will contribute to our economy, our local economy now and over the next five years? And, you know, and really max out the purpose of the program. So giving it to an outsider and have them sit out of, sit out of our economy for five years is such a negative impact to our bottom line. And, and it's just outrageous. But, but roll calling.
Council President, can, can, can I answer?
And I don't want any commentary around it, but there it is. And those are the facts. So Mr. Jose is a city resident. He currently lives here and he's probably on a tax rolls. And he probably, his kids probably go to the school, et cetera, et cetera, and all the things that Council President said. But we're going to give it to outsiders who contribute nothing to Trenton.
Council President, may I clear up some, some ambiguity?
Mister.
Final ambiguity.
Mister, um, uh, Mr. Daniels, we're going to move on.
You live here.
Ms. Penny Carter, excuse me, Councilwoman Vaughn, Penny, Ms. Penny Carter.
Excuse me.
Can we continue to 22 dash 147?
Uh, 22 dash 147, resolution awarding a contract through a fair and open process in accordance with NJ SA 48, call them 11 dash 4 to Northeast and Buck's Co. company trading as Mullin and Loan, Loan Ergen Associates to provide planning services for development and preparation of the 2022 Annual Action Plan Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, CAEPER, uh, completion of environmental reviews, E R R, Home A R P Plan and technical support related to HUD programs in an amount not to exceed $125,000 for a period of one year from March 18, 2022 to March 17, 2023 per RFP 2022 dash O1B.
A roll call, please.
Okay. Resolution 22 dash 148, a resolution authorizing to rescind resolution number 21 dash 545 and canceling the contract awarded to to Keep It Clean Hardware and Janitorial Supply Company, Inc. under a bid 2021 dash 63.
Okay, so I got a couple of questions that I'd need to ask Mr. Lavenberg in, in reference, uh, to 22 dash 148. And it'll go into, uh, resolution 22 dash 149. Mr. Lavenberg?
Yes, Council President.
Um, could you give us the reason that you are, uh, uh, rescind, uh, canceling this contract with, uh, keep it, uh, to keep, to keep it clean?
Sure. Uh, I'd be happy to, Council President. Um, we went out to bid for this like we do every year for the cleaning service. Uh, the company, uh, Keep It Clean was the low bidder. And, um, they were awarded the contract for that. And then, uh, just before they started, they were having trouble, uh, getting personnel to do it. So they withdrew, uh, and did not agree to the contract. And that's the reason why we're, we're pulling it out was the reason they, they didn't have enough staff, uh, to do it, or they couldn't provide the staff to do it.
Okay, so do you have the, uh, was the withdrawal letter attached to, uh, the backup information? Because I didn't see it. I'm looking now.
I do not have it in my pack.
It wasn't in my packet either. All right. So I would just ask you to send that over to me, um, before I place the vote on this. So I'm gonna, um, uh, expect to see that withdrawal letter, uh, sent over to Ms. Carter.
I'm, I'm sorry, Council President. I think, uh, Mr. Cherry was trying to say something.
Yes, Madam President, I do have a copy. I don't know how it, it somehow didn't make it in your packet, but I will scan it and email it to you. So you will have it tomorrow.
Alrighty. Cause I would like to see that because that's when you, um, when you, uh, when you begin to cancel, uh, one contract and then you extend another, um, I just need to understand exactly what is, uh, taking place. So I would definitely like to see that letter.
Um, absolutely. You'll have it tomorrow.
Alrighty, so, um, Ms. Penny Carter, this could be, uh, part of the consent agenda. Um, so long as I get that letter, I'll know before then whether to move it to a roll call.
Okay. 22 dash 149, resolution authorizing a two month contract extension to S and C Facility Services for continued cleaning services at Trenton Water Works Distribution of Complex from March 1, 2022 to May 1st.
The initial bids that were received and, and deal with one of those bidders rather than to extend a contract that should have, uh, uh, that should have, that probably did expire? Wouldn't it be better to go back to the?
Well, we would have, we would have to, uh, go before council and ask for the council to, um, reject the bid or throw that bid out and then re-advertise it at that point. Uh, so to have the continued service, um, this was the route that we went. I can, I can also get you a copy of the bid specs for that as well.
Right, see that's, see this is the problem. Like you, you, um, we have this here and I understand if you have the letter, I get it that they didn't have the staff. But once they sent that letter, then we should have moved to either put another bid out immediately rather than to try to give the same company an extension because this is seem, this seems to be a problem here in our city where we're not following the procurement laws. And I just believe that if, uh, if we had received the letter, I have to see the date on the letter and when it was received, uh, to be able to determine when you should have went out with the new RFP for this service.
Madam President, if I may.
Yes.
Um, unfortunately, as you said, uh, to touch on procurement law, unfortunately, the, the award of this contract was actually in December of 2021, uh, to announce they'll bid, which is why we have to rebid it. The company Keep It Clean did not furnish us with this letter withdrawing from the service until February 28th of this year. So we have moved since then to reject that award and rebid. We just need the time, uh, and we wanted to be better safe than sorry to give two months rather than one month so that we had enough time to come before council and award a new contract or recommend award of a new contract prior to the end of the extension.
Thank you so much, Mr. Cherry.
Of course.
Ms. Penny Carter?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, you can add that to the consent agenda.
All right. 22 dash 151, a resolution accepting a bid and awarding a contract to IBN Construction Corporation for demolition of 942 Prospect Street building for the Department of Water and Sewer for a period of one year from March 18th, 2022 to March 17th, 2023 in an amount not to exceed $520,000 under a bid 2021 dash 20.
I thought this bid, I thought this resolution had failed. Is this an?
Council President?
Yes, I thought this bid had failed.
No, not this one in particular. This one didn't fail. The, uh, but this is the same company we had the issue with last, uh, council meeting. The IBN that had the property for sale. Um, and this bid, I'm not sure if it's actually outdated because the bid is from 2021.
Yeah, we do have the letter that they extended the price for that. And, and the one thing is, I mean, if this votes up or down, uh, that's fine. But the, the one thing is the estimated cost of the demolition.
Mister, mister.
That was done by.
Mister, Mister Lavenberg, Mister Lavenberg.
Yes, sir.
I, I, I don't understand, um, who gave you the floor. Ms., uh, uh, Councilwoman Wilkins was making a statement.
Yeah, I want to roll call it. Council President?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
You may continue, Ms., uh, Carter.
Resolution 22 dash 153, resolution accepting a bid and awarding a contract to Core and Main LP for the furnish and delivery of F O B of Kennedy valve model number 5571 gate valves slash A W W A C 515 ductile iron body 350 PSI on an as needed basis for a period of one year from March 17th, 2022 to March 18th, 2023 in an amount not to exceed $131,840 under bid 2022 dash O2.
Roll call.
Okay. 22 dash 154, resolution accepting a bid and awarding a contract to Core and Main LP for the furnish and delivery F O B of curved box materials, curved box rods and foot pieces from April 8th, 2022 to April 7th, 2023 in an amount not to exceed $62,872 under a bid 2022 dash O3.
Uh, Council President, may I speak?
Yes, go right ahead.
Um, can we roll call that? Um, this is under the Department of Water and Sewer, correct?
Yes.
You mean, do they even be on this docket since they have their own budget? Can Mr. Lavenberg answer that?
Councilwoman, stop being facetious and let us move on.
No, I'm not being facetious. This is a serious matter. Because the parking authority doesn't have their contracts on our, uh, docket. The school board doesn't have their contracts on your docket. So I just want to know.
That person.
Utility.
Yes.
Is their own, is their own utility, then why are they on our docket?
Yeah, we're not, we're not going to get into that.
Oh, well, no, but that, that Council President, it's a legitimate.
Vaughn, you asked for an opinion from Mr. Colosi. Let us get your opinion.
I'm just making a point, okay, for the residents of this city. I advocate the way I choose to advocate and I asked that question because.
Right, your, your point, your point is well taken.
It's very conflicting, conflicting here. So the administration should not be setting a narrative out there that's totally not accurate. And we need to get the New Jersey Board of Public Utilities in on this as well because this is outrageous.
Alrighty, so, um, Ms. Penny Carter, we're going to continue. 22, we're going to, thank you, Councilwoman Vaughn.
You're welcome.
22 dash 155.
Uh, 22 dash 155.
I want that rating.
I have it. It's noted. It's noted to roll call.
Thank you.
22 dash 155, resolution accepting a bid and awarding a contract to Ferguson Water Works for the furnish and delivery F O B of High Max and High Max II couplings in varying sizes, four inches to 16 inches from April 8th, 2022 to April 7th, 2023 in an amount not to exceed $48,085.08 under a bid 2022 dash O4.
Consent.
Resolution 22 dash 158, resolution to accept a bid and awarding a contract to Rustling Paving for roadway reconstruction for the city of Trenton for a period of one year from April 8th, 2022 to April 7th, 2023 in an amount not to exceed $446,775 under bid 2022 dash 10.
I'm gonna, I, I want to roll call, uh, of this. And the reason that I want to roll call it is because when the contractors that dug up most of our streets inside their contract should have been the money to restore those sidewalks in, um, in our streets back to their original position. And so I don't understand why we're paying out of our pocket to have paving done when the contractors that did the lead line replacement should have made, uh, the street, uh, replace the, uh, cement on the side, on the sidewalk and in the roadway as they found it or in a better position rather than the city having to pay. So I would like to roll call that.
Okay. Resolution 22 dash 159, a resolution accepting a bid and awarding a contract to Municipal Maintenance Company for electrical, mechanical and general maintenance emergency repairs on an as needed basis for a period of one year from April 8th, 2022 to April 7th, 2023 in an amount not to exceed $125,500 under bid 2022 dash O8.
Who's Municipal Maintenance Company? Roll call.
Is that a question for me, Councilwoman? Or Council President?
I, I'll look at the backup.
Okay.
Resolution 22 dash 160, resolution accepting a bid and awarding a contract to PBS Technologies, Inc. for the furnish and delivery F O B of Frederick, Frederick, Frederick uh, chloride from March 18th, 2022 to March 17th, 2023 in an amount not to exceed $861,600 under a bid 2022 dash 18.
Consent.
Resolution 22 dash 161, resolution accepting a bid and awarding a contract to Greer Line Company for the furnish and delivery F O B of quick line for a period of one year from April 8th, 2022 to April 7th, 2023 in an amount not to exceed $140,000, $48,400 under bid 2022 dash 13.
Consent.
Resolution 22 dash 162, a resolution accepting a bid and awarding a contract to Univar USA Inc. for the furnish and delivery of 15% sodium hyperchloride for a period of one year from March 18th, 2022 to March 17th, 2023 in an amount not to exceed $381,600 at a unit price of $1, $1.272 cents per gallon for 300,000 gallons under bid 2021 dash 78.
Consent. 163, 20, 22 dash 163.
Um, res- a resolution 22 dash 163, resolution accepting a bid and awarding a contract to Municipal Maintenance for, for prevent, preventive maintenance and inspection of the RDP check, Kim line slacking system for a period of one year from April 8th, 2022 to April 7th, 2023 in an amount not to exceed $323,370 under bid 2022 dash 21.
Uh, um, Council President?
Yes, go right ahead.
Uh, this is the same company above?
Yes, it is.
So can we roll call this? And, um, Mr. Lavenberg, can you tell me why we have two separate contracts with this one vendor?
Yes, traditionally these, um, do get broken up into multiple bids that go out. Uh, so we, we do a bid for the line system, which is, um, always in need of, of maintenance and repair, particularly preventative maintenance. Cause if we lose it, uh, we have to shut down the plant. The other one is for a mechanical and electrical contract. Uh, and these have been longstanding, traditional, uh, annual contracts, uh, broken up into different pieces. But, uh, the fact that the same company can do both services is one thing, but they don't always necessarily, they're sole bidder on these projects.
Uh, so were they the sole bidder?
No. I, you, you know, the, again, the purpose is we, we break them up into different things. So we don't want to have all one, all encompassing, um, company that does everything. We need companies that can specialize in what they do. These guys, you know, they're in the water and sewer business and this is what they do.
Well, but, but again, uh, we don't want to be in a business as a city to, uh, continue to use the same vendors and being held hostage to the same vendors and, and all this, you know, they become familiar and they're on rotation and we don't get a benefit because we're not, uh, you know, um, uh, taking advantage of the competitive bids. So this is how, we don't know if we're getting.
These are bids.
I'm not asking.
These are bid and.
But why are you speaking when I'm speaking? I'm making a statement right now. I didn't ask you to speak at all, Mr. Lavenberg. So all I'm saying to, you know, um, and to advantage the taxpayers of the city that, uh, the purpose of the open bid, everybody. that, uh, the purpose of the open bid, if everybody who understands how a competitive bid process works, you, you, you get the best price, you get the best bang for your buck when you, uh, choose multiple vendors. So when you constantly have a sole bidder, or so you you'll say, I don't know, I don't participate in choosing or ranking the vendors or the procurement process, but the way it looks to me and the repetitiveness of the, the folks who get the contracts here in the City of Trenton, it doesn't seem like we're getting, uh, the best market prices here, because we're not effectively uh, um, uh, utilizing or, or, uh, 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 utilizing the procurement process in the way the state law has put forward. So I would just say that-
Do you want to roll call this?
It's, it's the purpose for the competitive bid process. Uh, competitive bid process means, um, uh, it's competitive bid, the most responsible bidder doesn't always, you, doesn't mean just because you bid the lowest that you automatically get the bid. Okay? That's absurd, it's ridiculous, and it's small-minded thinking. So let's, let's start to create some competition here in the bidding process and open the market up in our, uh, city up to other businesses. Thank you, Council President.
Uh, Ms. Penny Carter, that will be roll called, and we can move on to twenty-two dash one sixty-five.
I had my hand up, Council-
Oh, I didn't, I didn't see it, Councilwoman.
Yeah. Um, Miss, um, Mr. Lavenberg, um, I would just like for future reference, I'm accustomed to when I get a resolution with multiple bidders that they, we have an attachment with the bidders on it and what they bid. And I don't see that on any of these.
Uh, Council President, um, if I may speak?
Yes, go right ahead, Mr. Lavenberg.
It, it should have been in your package, we had two bidders for the, um, electrical and mechanical work. Uh, and Municipal Maintenance was the sole bidder for the, um, for the line slaking system. Uh, Council President, uh, if you don't have it in your packet, uh, we can get that to you first thing tomorrow morning.
Okay, thank you.
Not a problem. Alrighty, so we can move on to twenty-two dash one sixty-five.
A twenty-two dash one sixty-five, a resolution accepting a bid and awarding a contract to Kim Wright, Inc. for the furnishing and delivery F O B of copper sulfate for a period of one year from April eighth twenty twenty-two to April seventh twenty twenty-three in an amount not to exceed forty-three thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars under a bid twenty twenty-two dash seventeen.
If there's no problem with that, it could be a consent, part of the consent, and move on to one sixty-six.
Twenty-two dash one sixty-six, a resolution accepting a bid and awarding a contract to George S. Cowan Chemical, Inc. for the furnish and delivery F O B of Coag- Coagulant Aid Palmer for a period of one year from April eighth twenty twenty-two to April seventh twenty twenty-three in an amount not to exceed one hundred and eighty thousand, one, one hundred and eighty thousand one hundred and twenty dollars under bid twenty twenty-two dash fifteen.
That could be a part of the consent.
Twenty-two dash one sixty-seven, it's a resolution accepting a bid and awarding a contract to B C H G, Inc. for portable water residue, residues, residuals, disposal, blending, and beneficial re- reuse for a period of one year from March eighteenth twenty twenty-two to March seventeenth twenty twenty-three in an amount not to exceed five hundred and ninety-four thousand nine hundred dollars under bid twenty dash twenty-two dash sixteen.
I just would like to know for Mr. Lavenberg, was this the only, uh, bid that came in?
Yes, that's correct, the, that's correct, Council President. This is, um, quite a unique endeavor that, uh, Trenton Water Works has been involved with for the last, uh, as far as I know back history-wise, at least ten, twenty years. Um, we take the sludge out of the treatment plant and the hauler, uh, who is B C H G will haul, you know, they take it, have a way, take it down to, uh, Tuff Island, uh, where it is processed. Uh, and then the, the product that's created with that, which is a combination of our sludge and, and sand, uh, has a beneficial reuse, uh, which the vendor, you know, has the ability to get rid of. Uh, there were some issues with this, uh, contract back in twenty nineteen. Um, and one of the things that, that T W W looked into was going to an alternate to, to using this, this system. Uh, that would be hauling the sludge to a landfill, and twenty nineteen prices, you were looking at about two and a half million dollars for disposal, so um, this is a very reasonable cost to get, to get rid of it. It is a beneficial reuse. Uh, the D E P really likes the, the ability to do that, because most other systems have to haul their sludge off the landfills, but, uh, it does create an excellent product and is used, uh, by contractors all over the, uh, all over the East Coast.
Alrighty, thank you, Mr. Lavenberg. So that can be, um, if no one has any, um, problems with that, it could be part of the consent. And, um, the, um, the next thing on the docket will be the executive session.
We have the ordinance that would, would be introduced on Thursday's meeting, and the public hearing would be set for April the fifth.
We already have a public hearing set for April the fifth.
I mean, March the fifth, I mean, May the fifth, I'm sorry, May the fifth.
Yeah, we already have one set for May the fifth.
So then you wanna, wanna go further out?
I, I, I just don't want to push them all there together, but the, it could be, um, it could be two, uh, public hearings, that would be fine.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Um, did, uh, the question that I wanted to ask the body was do they want to? Well, I think we need to go into the, um, executive session, but I was gonna ask the body if they wanted, um, to do, uh, the, 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 the civic, the public, uh, comment and the civic comment before we went into executive session. I think that would be proper if they agreed to do the public and the civic comment and then go into executive session. I agree.
Council President, we do have, still have outside councils staying up.
Yeah, but they're not, they're, they're not on, they're just, they're just on standby, right?
I agree. The residents are important to the outside council.
Um, so, uh, so, um, I just need to, I just need to, um, have a show of hands of, of the, of eyes, right? And then, um-
Aye.
Aye.
And myself, so that's for, mm-hmm, Ms. Penny Carter, Ms., uh, Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson. And so we'll hear the public comment, um, Councilman Harrison, are, are you in agreement with that? Councilman Joseph Harrison? Uh, um, so we'll have, uh, the public comment, and then we'll have the civic comment, and then we'll go into executive session, because those are just litigations. Um, so Ms. Penny Carter, if you could look for the hands, or Councilwoman Vaughn, if you would be able to assist us with this, if Ms. Penny Carter doesn't see the hands?
Yes, yes ma'am.
I don't see any hands at all.
That's the first one that I have, Ms. Garrett.
Excuse me, could I, excuse me, just one minute. Could I have a motion for the public comment?
And so move it.
Who moved it?
Amber, you have people on the phone, so after every hand raised, if you will go to the phone line to see if there's anyone o- on the phone, okay?
Yep, agreed. The first one is, was, uh, Sherry Garrett.
Go right ahead, Ms. Garrett.
Thank you very much, um, Council President and the council body. Um, I just have a, just a small comment. Um, twenty-two one forty, um, you know, I have two young children in the, um, the school district uh, on the west side, and I noticed that a lot of the lunches on Wednesday, because every Wednesday they have a half a day. So all the students get issued, um, their lunches, and they take them and they go. And, um, the children who live near, um, Joyce Kilmore, the lunches are, like, dumped from coming out the door, going up to the steps, going into the neighborhoods.
Ms., 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 Ms. Garrett, this is pertaining to this docket, and the Trenton Council has nothing to do with the school lunches. That's what the-
My point, I'm trying, I, I understand that, um, um, Council President McBride, so back to what I'm saying here is that it's the same situation. I didn't see much of the summer lunches, um, um, but I did notice in some certain, um, parts, the lunches were, like, dumped. So I don't know if it was many students, I mean, many, um, children that just didn't like the lunch, or they just didn't come and partake in the lunch. Okay, I'll move on. Um, uh, twenty-two one forty-five, uh, in regards to the, um, purchase money mortgage, I'm a little confused, because, you know, we're, 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 we, we have a problem where um, twenty-two one forty-five and twenty-two one forty-six and twenty-two one forty-seven. So I noticed that we're having, and there's a few other ones here for demolition, so we're, we're demoing property, we're issuing out mortgages to properties that need severe rehab. So my, 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 my thought is that the city, like I said, as, uh, Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson say, stated last, uh, Thursday, or the, with the, the last council meeting, so much money comes to the, through, through the city. I mean, it comes through, uh, through, uh, subsidies, grant, sub- so different types of subsidies, like grants, whatever per se. Why aren't we rehabbing? You know, I know we're trying to do a re- a, 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 a redevelopment authority, and we're trying to bring in developers, but if we're paying the money out to redevelop, I mean, we're paying out the money to demo, we're issuing out money at eleven percent, okay, I mean, six percent, um, taxpayers' dollars, we're, we're intro- we're, we're, we're giving out for us mortgages and giving interest as revenue. What are we doing with the money? Why aren't we just, um, rehabbing these properties and selling them? Where people, we, I mean, this, to me, is a waste of time, and, and what, um, Sally Samuel said, well, it's really not a mortgage, we're just holding the, the note, and they pay the city five percent. So you're not really issuing any money, so why are you holding, why are you charging six percent interest? I'm not, I'm not really understanding that. It just sound like some gangster mobster, uh, you know, holding people to uh, conditions that this, this does not benefit the community, the, the City of Trenton, period. Okay? Um, what else I was gonna say? Oh, and I don't see the property address on here, you know, since Mr. Collins hasn't returned, I notice that we don't have much detail on here, because we don't get the supporting documentation for twenty-two one forty-five and twenty-two one forty-six. What's the address? Um, I just think that the conditions, and I've read some of the conditions that, uh, Housing and Economic Development offers, especially for herst- first-time buyers. Come on now, it's like a, a ball and chain around the neck. It's like, it's not even worth it. It's best to go out to the, um, the banks and, or, or, uh, some, um, federal, uh, finance, fin- financing, because it's just, we're not really offering anything that gives you any breway or want to invest, but I don't know where it's going, but it just seems like something going on that's not, not helpful. Um, let me see. What, twenty-two one forty-eight, how much money was drawn down on this contract? Okay, so this gentleman got a contract in December, I mean, this company got its contract in, um, December two twenty-one. Uh, you got a, uh, you had a, uh, 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 the not, a letter, a letter submitted that you can't go forward with the cleaning, so did, was any, any money paid out to this contractor at all from December to February? And, uh, who was doing the cleaning of the building? If they didn't have any workers, or they, they only had one worker, they did all, whatever, one little building, I don't know. I don't know to what extent that was, but it just wasn't, it wasn't answered. Twenty-two one fifty-eight, uh, we were told to, we were told the above is part of the initial contract. Okay, twenty-two one fifty-eight, the resident sent a bid awarding contract for Rustling Paving. Yes, um, Council, uh, Council President, yes, you are correct. When this, when these contracts, there was three, um, uh, vendors for this, uh, lead line replacement, and we were told from A to Z, they were gonna replace the road, they're gonna replace the sidewalks, whatever they dug up, they destroyed to, um, to, uh, replace those, um, pipes, they were going to restore. So I don't really understand why we're putting out more money. And twenty-two one sixty, um, why so expensive? What, okay, why is the water? This, uh, this is my last, that last bid. This whole thing under Mr. Lavenberg, let me say this, and I keep saying, I, I keep saying, we moved to these tanks, we cut the reservoirs, we're taking all our water from the Delaware River to turn it into H two O. So in order to turn that water into H two O, we gotta put all these dang on chemicals in there. Okay? And then it become a, it became a profit thing, because all these chemicals keep going up. They keep going up. So how much, to what extent are we gonna be paying to turn this water in H two O before we start poisoning ourselves with all these freaking chemicals, so we can turn this water into H two O? Like, I just, it's just, and, and then, you know, you know, when, when there's, when there's a question put on the floor, you know, from the council, we keep getting thrown to EPA. Obviously, the people working at EPA, I think they just hired them who don't know what the hell they're doing, because, or, I don't know what they're doing. They just got jobs, because common sense would tell you that water, and I did submit this to all the council, that the water in the coun- in the United States is bad. Fish don't even grow in it. So what you're trying to push, uh, the, the various water companies all around the sta- all around the country to go into this whole tank thing and, and pull water out of the, out of these, uh, uh, water, uh, uh, so- sources, and it's not healthy. You know, it's, I just, I'm just not, and this prices of this stuff is gonna go up. And I would like, uh, do a price comparison of the needs for the chemicals since we transitioned the tanks and, 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 um, the Delaware River, because I'm sure you can tell that we're paying a whole lot more. Trenton Water Works, to me, it sound like the cost to operate is increasing based on the, the dictation or the initiative that, uh, these people who's claiming it, because they got a college degree, that, that they supposed to have some sense, because most people, there's a lot of educated fools out here, and it seems like we, we take advice from some educated fools about our water resource. That's really it. And, oh, and this mental health worker for twenty-two eleven, a mental health worker, what does that mean? You don't need to put a, a, a mental health worker, that doesn't sound, say like they have credentials. And, 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 and the mental health worker, or, what are they servicing, the people who work there, this, at, at the city? I mean, what exactly is this, this gonna do for the city? You know, or is it for the city, uh, rank and file, or is this for the, the residents of the city? But, uh, mental health worker, I, I just don't know how this position, and if it's, if low enough pay, what do you need? I don't know. We just hire, we just pay, uh, aisles, uh, who don't even, that's not even their forte for mental health services in the community, and I still ain't heard no, nothing from, um, the administration, how that's working out, and where to contact or send people who have mental health issues, uh, to get services. I want some, I wanna go and check out some services to deal with this whole, uh, Trenton Water Work thing. I wanna get some counseling about it, 'cause somebody please help me out. Thank you.
Uh, Councilwoman Vaughn? Could you give me the next person?
Yes, yes, the next person is, I just want to check, anybody else on the phones that, uh, can't put up their hand? Okay, the next hand is Vanessa Sullivan.
Go right ahead.
Hello, hi, good evening to all the council members. Um, first of all, I would like to say another thank you for, uh, everyone that voted yes for Sullivan New Beginnings Home Ownership Program. And I wanted to speak about it, because tonight I hear y'all talking a lot about inspections. And I want to make sure that I got approved for my program, that everything in my house is inspected from the lead levels in the water to the, uh, chemical contaminator soil, I want the works for my place. So anybody that voted yes for me on my program, I would appreciate any support that you can give to that, and we should all be working together for my program, which I think is very important. Uh, another one I want to say is, get the lead out of Trenton, lead-free New Jersey. Uh, I want to have good water in my new home. I don't want to have any lead pipes or whatever that may be. Um, the next one I want to say is for the mental health. Uh, we do need a lot of mental health services. There's a lot of people where I live in Dolly Holmes right now, these people hella depressed, they hella sad, these kids is scared, they come to me all the time, they tell me they scared, they think they gonna die. They think, uh, they're gonna get shot up, you know, by the police. You know, they, they, and young people are coming to telling me that they, uh, they- You know, they, they, and young people are coming to telling me that they, uh, they're children, they know people that's been, uh, uh, what is it, contaminated by lead, uh, you know. So that's all I wanted to say tonight, everybody have a God bless night, that's it.
The next person is Michael Jackson.
Excuse me. Mr. Jackson? Mr. Jackson?
Michael Jackson. Can you unmute yourself, Mr. Jackson? Star six.
Oh, star six.
That's right, star six. Michael Jackson?
We trying, but we can't unmute.
We, we can hear you, you're on.
Oh, okay. All right, I'm gonna ask about, um, seventy-eight Evans Avenue.
No, 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 first you need to, um, identify yourself and.
Hi, my name is, uh, Karen Clark Jackson, my address is seven-twenty Southern Street in Trenton. And I'm, um, inquiring about a house on, um, seventy-eight Weber, I mean, seventy-eight Evans Avenue that I would like to try to, uh, purchase the lien.
That, that has to, you, you need to be going to the Housing and Economic Development Department or, um, go to the mayor's office and get that information. This council does not, um, handle that at all. So, um, Housing and Economic Development, or, um, try the mayor's office and ask them to, uh, push you through to the Housing and Economic Development Department.
They said they was voting on, um, if they gonna sell us the lien or not.
No, no, y- young man.
Oh, it's on the docket, Council President.
Yes, ma'am.
It's on a resolution tonight.
If it's on the docket, they would have a docket number or a resolution number.
Well, I'm just, well, I'm just trying to help the resident out, Council President.
I have an act number right here underneath the, um, NJ.
This is, this is not, this is not questions and answers, you're gonna have to go back to the administration. You're gonna have to go back to the administration and, um, pose your question to the administration.
Okay.
Because if, if there was, if, if there was something that the council was voting on, there would be a resolution number. We vote by resolution and ordinance.
She said it was something on the docket with that.
Who said that? Excuse me, Council President. I believe they're talking about the, um, one that was roll called regarding the assignment of the tax sale certificates.
Yes, that one.
But that still doesn't come before the council. Excuse me, they still have to go to the Housing and Economic Development Department to determine, uh, what to do about that, about the, uh, property. We don't make those decisions of what goes on to, for tax sale. That's not something that we do.
Okay, I understand, I understand, I just thought I helped.
You have to go back to the Housing and Economic Development or to the tax assessor's office. If it's a, if it's a tax sale, you have to go back to the tax assessor to find out how you go about purchasing the lien. That is nothing that the council does.
They went to that process.
The tax, the tax collector.
No, they went to the economic department, they told them to come here. What did you miss about that?
I, 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 I didn't miss anything, but that's not your job and it's not mine. What is our job is what comes before us, whether we're gonna vote it up or vote it down.
The resident is saying they already did what you asked them to do. They already did that, so you're, our director. They've already done that, Council President.
Excuse me.
All the paperwork you did and they keep sending us back to different, um, different offices to be able to get the ball game rolling.
I, I, I am just going to say to you that, um, tomorrow, uh, you need to reach out to, uh, Mr. Daniels, C. Daniels, with Housing and Economic Development. And, uh, and, and, and give him your information. And Mr. Daniels is on this line, um, just put your name on the record. So Ms. Penny Carter can pull your name up if they don't get it. And we, and go back to them tomorrow because what happens here is.
Wow.
We get, the things that's here, the things that's here on this docket is to be voted up or down. What, how they list them, that's up for them to list them. It's up for them to take them off, not this, not this body, we don't do that. So you have to go back to Mr. Daniels. Mr. Daniels have to address the issue or the tax collector, whomever put that list together is who you have to go to.
Oh, we went through them, they sent us an email saying that the lien was, is thirty-two thousand dollars. We'll be helping the city out.
We do not, we do not deal with that and, and, and we do not deal with that at all.
We trying to help the city by spending thirty-two thousand dollars on buying a lien.
Young man, then you need to go into the tax collector's office, or you know, need to go into the mayor's office. The council does not do that.
All right, miss, thank you so much.
What office is C. Daniels in? So when I get down there.
C. Daniels is in Housing and Economic Development. The person that put the list together for the lien is in the tax collector's office. So there's two people that you could see, the tax collector or Mr. C. Daniels. If they're, if they're trying to purchase a lien, you have to go through the tax collector's office to.
She said you all have to vote on it before she could issue it to us.
Twenty-two dash one-three-one, it's on the docket, twenty-two dash one-three-one.
Wow.
Twenty, twenty-two. So now what, if it's on a docket, then what, then will we go from here?
Then you go back to them and then they'll explain the process to you.
You gotta do the process all over again? When we went through the process, that's how we ended up in this meeting.
I, I just.
Embarrassing ourselves, Council President, please.
First, first of all.
No, no. I'm on the, the residence is clear.
Listen to me, Councilwoman Vaughn.
No, Councilwoman, Council President.
It's on the docket, um, ma'am, you have to go to the tax collector to find out what the process is. Because when it comes to this body, all we do is either vote it up or vote it down. And then the tax collector takes it from there. We don't make those decisions.
Okay, I'm gonna go back tomorrow.
You're right, we don't make the decisions, the only thing that we do is vote it up or vote it down, and then the tax collector takes it from there.
Okay, can I ask you one question then?
Who vote? Go ahead, because this is not a question and answer, period, but go ahead and ask the question.
When we submit all the paperwork, don't y'all supposed to, um, vote on if y'all gonna issue out the lien to us or not?
We vote, okay, let me, let me look up the, and I could tell you exactly what the resolution says. The council will vote it up or vote it down, and it doesn't come in one. They have a list of properties that we vote to pass, like, or, um, a list of tax, uh, liens that we vote to pass. It's, I think it's one-twenty.
But, but he's right, Council President, we do do that.
One-twenty, one-twenty.
Uh, Council President, we do vote the sale of the tax lien to individual, uh, buyers.
And that's where the stage I thought we was at.
Yes, 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 Council President, I'm just saying.
We voted as a whole.
No, we don't, no, we don't, not when it's going to an individual person who's buying it. Come on, Council President.
Down here, Mr., uh, give me the one-twenty-three, give me the number, uh, Paul Harris, give me the number again.
Twenty-two dash one-three-one.
Embarrassing.
It's discouraging to us trying to purchase something.
And we don't vote until Thursday. Okay, twenty-two dash one-thirty-one, so this is a tax sale. So once it's, once it's voted up or down, then it goes back to the, uh, to the, uh, tax collector's office. Am I not, am, what am I missing with that? We just voted up or down, and once.
So tonight is not, tonight you vote up and down, tonight is not tonight?
We voted, we vote on this on Thursday. Twenty-two dash one-thirty-one is up for a vote, and it is either voted on, on, it's voted on on Thursday. Then it goes back to the tax collector's office.
They were asking about the vote.
But the vote doesn't take place until Thursday, and it's, it was a.
No, but, but we have, one of those properties should have their name next to it because they already expressed the interest in buying the lien.
It doesn't have a name on it, it has.
But that enlies the issue, that enlies the issue.
It doesn't, and it doesn't state it here.
So, so Mr. Daniels should fix that, or, or Ms., um, Fox should fix that, or Luden.
This comes under the, um, the Finance, uh, Department, the Tax Assessor or the Tax Collector. And like I said, it'll be voted on, on Thursday. And then after Thursday, you go back to the tax collector's office to see what the vote was, to see if it passed. And if it passed, then they'll give you your paperwork there. That's the best, I'm not, that's, that.
Funny, it's, it's interesting how Mr. Daniels is not saying anything and interrupting here.
No, 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 because it's not for him to interrupt. Excuse me, Councilwoman Vaughn, so, young man and young lady, on, on Friday, you would go back to the tax, uh, collector's office to see what the vote was, to see what the process is from there. Because tonight is a conference night, we conference all of the information. We talk about it, we discuss it, how we're gonna vote, whether we're gonna roll call it, whether it's gonna be part of a consent. And then we vote on it on Thursday. On Thursday, the vote is cast, and all the departments know, um, what passed and what didn't pass. So you would go to the tax, uh, collector or the tax assessor, because this comes out of the Department of Finance. So you would go to, I think, the tax collector to find out if your resolution passed, and they would take it from there.
There's no resolution for them, Kathy, there's no resolution for the Jacksons on there.
But it doesn't, they doesn't give it to you in resolution for a Jackson, they give it to you and, um, they list sixteen properties.
But, but that's the question though, what is it that, I, I, I can't?
You, you don't have to, just, young man, just on Friday, go back to the tax collector's office.
But they need another resolution for them particularly.
No, they don't, they, a young man.
Absolutely, they do. Sell that lien to them, we have to prove that.
We're not gonna debate here, because this is about, uh, uh, the questions that they had pertaining to the docket. I answered the question.
No, you did not.
Go back to the tax collector on Friday, to see how the vote, how the vote, uh, uh, came out for your resolution.
Can I ask one more thing before we get off of this? Just one more, just, can you just hear me out? I just wanna see whether or not if I can get a, uh, special tax sale under the Abandoned Properties Rehabilitation Act, NJSA fifty-five nineteen one-on-one. It will allow me to start this tax sale immediately and not have to wait for the city to declare the property to be abandoned. Could that happen?
Mr., Mr. Bridges.
Could you ask the attorney, could that, could he check that out?
I'm asking Mr. Bridges now.
Ask Sally Samuel.
Mr. Bridges. Um, this young lady has a question, we don't normally take, this is nor, normally not a question and answers, but because her concern is pertaining to this docket, um, she wants to know if she could, uh, um, speed up the process. And, um, you would have to answer that for her.
When does, when does the Abandoned Property Rehabilitation Act, the NJSA fifty-five nineteen one-on-one, so I can start the tax sale immediately and, and, uh, for I don't have to wait so the city, um, can declare the property to be abandoned because it's been sitting for so long. And it's thirty-two thousand dollars.
Right, uh, I, 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 I don't, I'm not gonna be comfortable giving you that answer on the fly. Um, I think there, I know that there is a process, um, primarily paperwork-driven and certification-driven. Um, what I could do is offer you to send me an email and, um, you can ca- contact your council, um, board, or you can go on the website and see that. And then we will figure out if there is a way to expedite that process. I just can't answer that, uh, you know, with a hundred percent certainty on the fly, but if you send me an email.
Madam President, this is Sally Samuel, can I ask?
Yes, go ahead, this is Samuel, go ahead.
Um, uh, um, yes, uh, so the state has an abandoned properties act, but the city, um, uh, uh, the last I, I would do has not adopted an ordinance to implement that act. So had, had we, if we had that ordinance, uh, adopted and enacted, then yes. Um, the, the person that's, that's asking the question could proceed in that manner, but I don't think that the city has adopted an ordinance. And so maybe that's something that the council may wanna consider to do because it will help in the process of, uh, expediting when these properties are abandoned so that we could, you know, sell them through a special tax sale. And then they, and they, it could be an expedited process for, for, uh, for the purchasers to, uh, to, to acquire the property and do what is necessary in order, um, you know, to, to move forward with that, with, with that acquisition. But, uh, the last, I checked, we didn't have an ordinance. So, uh, um, you know, unless.
So, so, Mr. Samuel, you're saying because we don't have. You're saying because we, because, uh, the state has enacted the law, but because the city hasn't adopted? That, that.
Yes, we, we have to pass an ord, we have to, we have to pass an ordinance. It was like, it's similar to like what they did with the, uh, with the marijuana. So you have to, the city now, each individual municipality now has to now take action to say that they're gonna implement, um, you know, what the state has put in place, the abandoned properties act. So they acted there, but the, but now the municipality has to take action, um, themselves. Um, uh, whether it be by a resolution or ordinance, I can't remember right now, but we haven't done that. And so we're unable, they're unable to do what they're asking.
So they're unable to do what they're asking by speeding up the process. But what I'm gonna say in reference to the, to the information that she just has given you, can you, can't you work with Mr. Colosi and put an ordinance together so that we can have, be able to offer that service to the residents in the city?
And, and, and Council President, might be jumping with, with, if I may jump with, Miss Samuel says absolutely correct. And that's why I said there's some additional research that needs to be done because we understand the black letter law, we understand the laws as written, and we understand it needs to be done in a perfect world. But I, I, as I said, to give a hundred percent answer as to other possibilities, it, it requires to look into it a little bit further.
Okay, so, 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 let me just say this to Miss Samuel, since we have the young lady on the phone talking about the Abandoned Properties Act. I think that you and Mr. Colosi should put an ordinance, uh, together. And, 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 um, we will sponsor that ordinance so that it'll be easier for the public to, uh, to purchase this abandoned property. But in the meantime, um, she wants to know, um, where does she go after this vote is cast for the property that she's trying to get? And I'm telling her that she should go to the tax collector, am I correct with that?
Madam President, that, that's correct, she can contact the tax office at any time, uh, to follow up on this or any other property that she would be interested in following up on.
Okay, so the property that she is concerned about tonight, when we vote on it on Thursday, she goes to the tax collector's office to find out, uh, how to complete the process?
Yes, she can reach out to the tax collector's office at any time and we'll walk her through whatever process steps she needs, either for this property or for a potential future property.
Okay, so, um, you need to, um, give Mr. Cherry your name and your email address so he could correspond with you. Can you do that now on the line, um, Michael J?
Uh, yes, yes, uh, type it in?
No, just, uh, just, uh, you can give it, give him your email address, uh, Mr. Cherry, your email address, or you can get his. Mr. Cherry, why don't you give her your email address since yours is public?
Yes, my email is C, the letter C, cherry, C-H-E-R-R-Y, at trentonnj.org.
At, at Trenton.
NJ.org.
It's C, it's C. Cherry, C dot Cherry? It's C, it's C Cherry, C dot Cherry, or just C Cherry?
Just C Cherry.
Okay. Thank you.
Alrighty.
Of course.
Thank you guys so much.
I have one more thing to help y'all out with, too. If you wanna, remember when you were saying about purchased houses, that you gotta live in it for five years? So you can rent it out.
That's the money
I think if, if somebody wanna rent it out, y'all should go up fifteen, fifteen hundred to twelve hundred dollars on the taxes for five years, so the city can make money off of that, it's just like, and then after the five years, they could make more money, I guess. But y'all should go up twelve hundred dollars on the taxes if they wanna rent it out. That's just my opinion.
That's, that's your recommendation. Thank you.
All right, I'm, I'm signing out, thank you for helping me. That, this was an idea we talked about.
Thank you.
Guys, all right, good night tonight. The next resident, um, is anybody on the phone that's unable to pick up their, uh, raise their hand?
Yes.
Who's that?
Valerie Thompson.
Hi Valerie, uh, Ms. Thompson, please move forward.
Okay, uh, I don't call in too often, but I'm glad I called tonight, because this whole thing about the tax lien sales, with it being under state laws. When you call, or even visit the tax office, you get a lot of different information. And when you have the tax lien sales, supposed to be once a year, they happen once every two years. It seems like auctions, well, tax lien auctions, and it seems like the auctions are not actually ha- happening. Sales are happening. So then that affects the interest rate, and then we're talking about where people can just straight out purchase it, find a property, find out how much the back taxes are. Apparently those things are happening. So if maybe we could get something like handbooks, because even when it comes to the ordinances, it looks like some things have been updated, but you don't have a line going through to see what it said in the past. So a lot of this is confusing, so if we could even get handbooks, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there someone on the phone, Councilwoman?
Yes, yes, this is Rama.
Okay, but Rama, I see your hand, so the next person, I'm gonna go, yeah, actually, Rama, you can go, you're next in line.
Yes, and this is regarding the discussion that we had this morning for the resolution of twenty-two dash one three one, resolution authorizing tax lien assignments for one hundred and fifty-six properties totaling two million six hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. So I am the one who would like to, uh, you know, comment on this one. I think, I, I have, I see several advantages of city, uh, assigning the tax lien to the investors. I'm the one who have applied for, uh, I think more than sixty properties in this, out of one fifty-six properties. The reason I want to say that cities should assign is because majority of the properties are, uh, abandoned properties or the properties that need renovation. And if the city assigned the property, assigned those tax liens to me, I would work with the homeowners and basically, uh, renovate the properties and have the homeowners live in the property, and those properties that are abandoned properties, those, no one is living there. Right now, those properties are getting deteriorated every day with the rain, with no, no air conditioning, no heating, heating. The properties are getting, uh, mold, um, and termite and all those things. So if the city assigned the tax lien to me, the property that are empty, I'm going to basically, uh, renovate the properties and sell the properties to the homeowners of the city. That way, city gets all the taxes for the past taxes, and the current taxes, and also the future taxes, when the homeowner live in the property. Uh, the other advantages of doing this, I don't basically do any eventing in that city of Trenton. And the other advantage is we have more homeownership in the city of Trenton, so that, uh, there are not, investors are coming in. And because I renovate the property, I sell at a reasonable value, the investors are not going to buy my properties, because they always want cheap properties. So I would urge the council members to, uh, to do the tax lien assignments on a regular basis, so that city gets the revenues. I'm going to pay all the past taxes, I'm going to pay the water dues, and I'm also going to pay, uh, the, the current and future taxes as well. That's what I want to say, so I, I urge city council members to basically vote for this, this city tax lien assignment. That is good from the financial point of view, and for the city of, uh, Trenton.
So, so, um, thank you, sir, the next person, um,
Yes, the next person is Caitlin Fair.
Go right ahead, Miss Fair.
Good evening, Council, you'll have to excuse my voice a little bit, I'm under the weather. Um, I just actually happened to get on, and, um, I'm really, really excited to hear, um, APRA coming up in the conversation in regards to tax liens. Um, APRA is something that ETC has been advocating for, for a really long time. Um, because as the resident who spoke earlier stated, um, it does allow the city to do special tax sales, which allows them to, to expedite tax sales. Um, and also allows them to set stricter limits on who is eligible to purchase properties. So it gives the city more control over who is able to purchase these tax liens, which I think can be a really beneficial thing for residents. Um, if the city uses that power responsibly. So I'm really, really excited to hear that conversation come up tonight in regards to, um, that particular matter, and I really hope that, um, that moves forward, and, um, we would be happy, we have some experience with APRA. Um, it is a bit of a process, there's a lot involved as far as creating, um, you have to create a certified list of abandoned properties. Um, but that process can begin before the ordinance is even passed, and I believe that actually the city at one time had begun, um, creating that list. Um, but the, the, the full process just never ended up getting followed through on, for one reason or another, um, that I'm not privy to. But, um, that process can, the process of creating the certified, um, abandoned properties list can begin even before the ordinance is passed. Um, and there, and then there are some notifications and stuff like that that have to happen, um, to go out to, to those property owners. Um, but it's a really great thing to implement, um, and really allows the city, like I said, to have more control over who's able to purchase those liens and expedite that process a lot. Um, and also it gives the city the ability to, um, you know, deal with houses that, um, maybe the taxes are current, but you have negligent, um, redevelopers who are land banking those properties. Um, it allows the city to have some more control over those kinds of properties as well. Um, so, you know, like I said, I just really encourage, um, that process to move forward, and I hope that the city and council will consider adopting it. Um, and we're happy to help, you know, in whatever way we can to expedite that process, or offer whatever guidance we can, and how that might, um, look for the city. So that's all I wanted to say, thank you so much.
Next person, is there anyone on the phone lines?
Yes.
Go right ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, state your name.
My name is Faith Ann Pearson.
No, no, no. She has her hand up.
You have your hand up, we're, we're asking for people that can't put their hand up that's on the phone line.
Oh, I didn't know if you could actually see my hand.
I can see
I will wait, and, thank you.
Yes, mhm, if there's no one on the phone, she'll call you, but see if there, is it, is there anyone on the phone line that can't raise your hand?
Okay.
What's, what do, you push star six if you're on the phone?
Okay, so, the, the next one in line is, uh, Alicia Carroll.
All right, go ahead, Miss Carroll.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes. Okay, thank you for having me, um, City Council, I just had a question about one, an ordinance.
Wait, there, wait, there's a lot of
There's a lot, I'm sorry.
Yes, there's, there's just a lot of
Okay, I'm sorry, I had to go back into another room. Um, so I wanted to, I'm sorry, I wanted to speak on ordinance, um, twenty-two dash eleven. Um, so there was a, uh, mem- or a, a community member who came on earlier, and they seemed to be, I feel like they were misinformed about said ordinance, and they weren't understanding, because they felt that mental health wasn't an important thing for the city of Trenton. So I actually work for Capital Health, um, and I work in the ER. Um, I bounce back and forth between the adult and the pediatric ER, and I can say for certain, mental health is a major crisis, especially in our youth in Trenton. We constantly are having, uh, children come in with mental health crises, and they have to be held in the ER, because there are no beds in the immediate area for said children. And to make matters worse, when you have people in Trenton who do have troubles with getting to places far off, it makes the pool of places that we can send this, these children even smaller. Because we don't wanna send this kid into Pennsylvania, down to Philadelphia, and things of that nature, because how are their parents going to be able to get there? Which is a part of the requirement for them to stay in said places. So to say that mental health isn't a crisis that we face, and this isn't an important factor, having someone to work with in the city that is specialized in that field, is completely inaccurate, it is absolutely a necessity.
No one said that. Uh, excuse me, don't interrupt, don't interrupt with someone speaking, whether you agree or disagree.
So, again, I just, and if you don't feel that way, cool, absolutely, I just wanted to reed- reiterate, because for listeners, that's what it sounded like. And I just didn't want anyone to be misinformed for the position of a mental health person within city council. It would be a person who would be advocating for the mental health of the community of Trenton, which is very, very important. A lot of issues in Trenton outside of even just what we see at surface level, as far as mental health would be solved. A lot of issues wouldn't be happening, so, uh, I am a huge support of that position, and I just wanted that to be said, and for the community to hear that as well. But thank you for your time, City Council.
Mm, thank you, Alicia. Um, the next person, is there anyone on the phone?
Where did the woman go, two, two zero five zero, I think she hung up.
Miss Pearson.
Okay, she's gone, the next one is Danielle Fran- Francois, Danielle Francois.
Yes, you got it, thank, thank you for taking the time to let me come on. Um, I own a couple of properties in Trenton, and I just wanna say that, um, that this process of assigning properties and the tax liens is, is right, right now, it's a very important, uh, 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 assign, uh, it's very needed right now. Number one, there's a lot of people that are, um, going to lose their homes, and those are people that are gonna be full clothes on, are gonna be needing homes to stay in. Um, also, it's an opportunity for us to improve the homes and improve the neighborhoods. But most importantly, it's an opportunity to provide people with, uh, housing, family, families with housing and so forth. So, right now, it's a, it's definitely an important process, we need to look into making it an easier process. I had to dig myself and find out where to go to on my own. I know for the regular person that's interested in it, right now, the process is just not, it's not clear enough and, um, open enough for individuals that may be able to take advantage of it, to take advantage of it. And, um, I wanna thank, um, Councilwoman Luden for, uh, uh, bearing with me in, in the process and helping me. That's all I have.
Thank you. Next person, Councilwoman Vaughn?
Uh, there is, if anybody else on the phone, that's it.
Alrighty, so I move to closed public comment.
It's, am I allowed to speak?
Yes, go right ahead, um, just, uh,
Okay, yeah, it's John, it's John Johnson. It's John Johnson on Lamberton Street. Um, I just wanted to reiterate the importance of, uh, us getting rid of these dilapidated that are continuing to, uh, become dilapidated. Um, these city-owned, uh, houses, and, uh, be honest with you, the process, I've looked into the process of owning a second home. Um, the process is, honestly, it's, it's very difficult. Um, that six percent of interest that we have to pay within the five years, it's, I'll be honest with you, the tax alone, um, being that, uh, I'll be honest with you, with the taxes compared to other cities, um, who don't have as much dilapidated houses, it's, it's, it's astronomical. Um, I don't think it's affordable, I think we need to relook into that whole process. Um, someone, uh, mentioned it before, uh, regarding, uh, it's, like I said, it's just not affordable. Uh, six percent, we're, we're, we're taking all this money from people, yet we want to influence people to, you know, to buy property in Trenton. I don't think there really should be an interest. We shouldn't be making money off of these properties when there's so many properties. I get it, if we have five, six properties that we're trying to get rid of, or we're trying to, you know, influence homeownership in Trenton, I get it, let's charge, whatever. But we have too many, that we need to start, uh, I think we need to relook into the process and, and to influence it, we need to change the way we do things. Whether we gotta take maybe some burden off of people who wanna live in the city, we gotta do what we gotta do, but, uh, us owning these properties for, for years and months, it's not doing anything for the city. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Um, so, um, um, I'm gonna close public comment out, and, um, Ms. Penny Carter, could you take the role, please?
Yes, mm, yes ma'am. Councilwoman Caldwell Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilman Michelle is absent, Councilman Rodriguez is absent, Councilwoman Vaughn?
Uh, yes.
Councilwoman
Yes.
Council President, President McBride?
Yes. I'm gonna open it up for the, uh, civic comment, um, because we still do have to go into executive session. Um, Council, uh, Councilwoman Caldwell Wilson?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Uh, this council has gone through tumultuous times in the past three years, and it has not been easy. I always say, we don't always have to agree, but surely we can come to a compromise. Unfortunately, that doesn't happen. Robert's rules of orders are ignored, and the discourse has become unprofessional. Because of this, I can no longer serve as Vice President of this council. Communication between myself and Council President has ceased to exist. I announced this at a meeting before the public, my colleagues, the administration, and to put it on record. I want to be fully focused on my constituents in the North Ward, and of course, the animal shelter. There are several of my colleagues who are anxious to be in a leadership position. Here's your chance, go for it, thank you, everyone.
Councilman Harrison?
Council President, my, um, all I gotta say is, the chamber should be open, uh, we should be in this room. Uh, it should be hybrid, if the, if the public wants to view it in person or online, they have the opportunity, but the council should be here in public. Now I say that again, thank you.
Thank you. Council, Councilwoman Vaughn?
Um, well, it's, uh, yep, I, um, thank you, Council President. And, uh, well, I, I'm very disappointed to hear that our Vice Chair is stepping down from that role. Um, uh, you know, uh, she, uh, was appointed, and, um, I, I encourage all our council members, even, uh, Santiago Rodriguez, to just try to, if you can, um, bear out your terms and, 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 and just consideration to serving the people and serving the people only. Um, I pride myself in just serving the electorate of the city and the resident taxpayers. Um, I, uh, I didn't come here, our city, I, I wanna first say that it's very important, uh, to say that our city is a nonpartisan municipality. We have a diverse electorate. We got a good, you know, out of forty thousand registered voters. It's registered Democrat, but a large, a large, now our vote, I think it's like twenty thousand registered Democrats, about eighteen thousand unaffiliated. That don't claim, uh, that don't classify themselves for either party. And we have about eighteen hundred, two thousand residents who actually classify themselves as Republican. And then we have a, 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 another small percentage that classified along other party lines. But my point is, this, this government, mayor and council, we are elected, um, as, uh, nonpartisan. And there's a lot of partisan activity that goes on in this city, by certain groups. And, uh, one of those groups operate out of the YMCA. And uh one of those groups operate out of the YMCA. And it's miss- it's unfortunate that everybody in our everybody, I I I'm speaking, this is my civic comment. So everybody in the city, again, I represent everybody and and particularly in in the West Ward. Regardless of their political classification, because by law, this city is nonpartisan. So and and I just wanted to clarify that. And the ma- majority of the people, a large majority, significant number are equally unaffiliated as they are classified as Democrat. So when we have meetings around the city, you know, private organizations, public organizations, you should keep that in mind. That if you're going to invite people, invite the whole city, not just people of your party. Um and and public officials who are elected to represent ti- represent Trenton, should keep that in mind. That all residents are you represent, rather you're representing fifteen legislative district, rather you're serving on the um the Mercer County Board of Commissioners, uh rather you self uh 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 serve in this council, rather you're the mayor. You represent Trentonians regardless of their political affiliation, because we're nonpartisan. And that hasn't been happening. But nonetheless, um I will uh just comment on, we should definitely do more, making sure that we got a lot of gun violence in our city. And there's and 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 they're direct symptoms of our of our of our large population that's in poverty or um low income, very low income levels, uh who aren't able to uh earn a living wage, who can't afford to buy homes and participate in our economy. We need to, our city, our government is here to give them a lift up and we haven't, we're failing them. And the numbers we see and the shootings, homicides, it's a direct result of that. So you shut out a population of people, they can't get jobs, they can't buy homes, they can't feed their families. What do you expect is going to happen? So we all in the city needs to change that dynamic. And it starts with this council and it starts with the mayor. He's the most powerful entity in the city. He can make it happen. So um we don't see resolutions and policies and ordinances and resolutions being put forward by the administration in that regard. Just like the policy, the ordinance that was suggested by a resident and and Miss Sally Samuels. Those are the policies that this council, that's what we do, we legislate, that's what we do. We supposed to put ordinances and policies in place that help our municipality succeed and thrive. But we're not doing that. What we're doing is giving our city and all the access and opportunities away to outsiders who have no, who are not entitled, who are not even eligible for these programs under the law. Funds that are earmarked for Trentonians, residents of this city. I recently found out that one of our prize organizations that gets a chunk of CDBG grant money, the NJTL program, have a large percentage of their kids that attend that program, don't live in Trenton. That those funds are earmarked to uplift children who come from disadvantaged homes. The kids in the suburbs don't have the challenges that residents of the city have. And it's a crime, it's a travesty that that money goes to them instead of the kids here. I won't allow it to happen.
This, Mrs. Gonzalez, can I ask you, I need to ask Mrs. Gonzalez to take his video, to shut his video down. Mrs. Gonzalez, could you take, could you shut your video down, please?
Uh the other thing that I just want to mention briefly, because I don't have a lot of time, is uh about the Little League and the summer programs that are coming out. All our parks need help. Uh we got a lot of ARPA money that's coming into the city in May. And uh we got basketball courts in Coweta Park that hasn't been enhanced. We, this council approved funding for Michael Brooks program. We approved funding for Ron Davis's Little League program and all the Little League fields across the city. And not yet, we don't see any of those parks being enhanced. We don't see any return on investment of this, what this council has provided to uh Director Richardson and her project manager. Where are, where is that money? Where are the, where's the evidence? Nothing. Park over there is full of weeds, the same bleachers are placed out there, the the nets over there are rotten. On the basketball court, the asphalt is rotten. And this is why we have a huge homicide rate in the city of Trenton. It's not just about kids, it's about adults. Adults need recreational outlets as well. The average age of the of the of men, black men and Latino men who are being shot and killed are, is thirty-two years old. That means young kids in this city will not see their father. But my father was thirty-two years old, he had seven kids. So this is the impact to the black community, long term. So we elected officials at all levels, local, county, Sam Frisbee, the Honorable Terrence Stokes, the Honorable Shirley Turner, for Lena Reynolds Jackson, they're all minorities. They know what it's, they know what the challenges are for these families. They need to step up and use their platform that we gave them and help the city. So uh it's sad. We need to stop taking our money to outsiders who don't live here. I'm advocating for Trentonians, people who live here, people who pay taxes here, and the people who vote here. If you don't do either three of those things, you need to go to your own municipality where you do pay taxes, where you, where you, where you do vote and where and 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 where you do and where you do live. Stop taking, stealing, getting money that you're not eligible or entitled. And that's all I have to say for now, Council President. I think uh, and I just want to say very quickly, I asked for Mark Lavender, I sent the email, multiple emails to the mayor and his designate to report, to get some things done, and he doesn't do it, he doesn't respond. And I know the mayor doesn't particularly care for me and my advocacy. But he's, his office serves his people. And when a a a a council member asks the mayor to do something, it's on behalf of a citizen. Just because he doesn't like Robin Vaughn doesn't mean he doesn't get to do that job that I request. I requested the mayor, his designate, to send me the latest uh revenue reports submitted that the city filed for Trenton Water Works to to New Jersey Public Border Utilities. And here it is in April, and I still haven't received it, Council President. Where is the report from New Jersey Border Public Utilities that the city, by regulation, by state law, supposed to file as a public water utility to the BPU on how much revenue was generated by our water utility? I want that report, Mayor. And Mr. Uh 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 Mr. Cherry? Please email me that report. Hopefully, you can get it to me by Thursday's meeting. And uh and Council President, and that's all I have to say for this evening. Thank you.
Uh Councilwoman Wilkins?
Yes, good evening. Um I'm going to be brief. I don't want to hold the people too much longer. Um I wanted to say thank you first to all of the constituency on the, on the telephone, um all the constituency on this uh call. Um but um I do want to state that something that stood out tonight um with us uh conducting this council meeting is that people are not informed. I know as uh when I worked as an employee for the city of Trenton, I made it my business to make sure that if I didn't know something, I could refer a resident, a citizen, a constituent to someone that could get them the answer. To me, right now, we are failing the residents of the city of Trenton by not being able to direct them where they need to go. Not saying that it is not uh some of their responsibility to get to know and to learn what it is that they need to learn and to do. But I believe that when citizens and residents come to City Hall, they should be directed properly and not be sent all over the place. And um listening to the young lady and um her husband this evening talk about the uh the tax sale information, um it 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 made me, you know, think this way. So I think information is very valuable and information is key. And our responsibility on on this council, which I believe that we are doing, is to make sure that we get the information to the people. But to the people, if there's some way that we can get information or other information, additional information to you, please let us know. Because I want the residents of this city, the citizens of this city, to be informed. It's not fair to keep them in the dark. All city services should be transparent. All city resources should be transparent. This is what the taxpayer, taxpayers pay for. And that just bothered me, it concerned me greatly, that the residents aren't informed. They go to the City Hall offices, but they're not informed. People send them here, people send them there, they have to be informed. But again, I just want to say thank you to the residents for continuing to do your civic duty. Thank you and good night.
Thank you, and thank everyone uh for coming on this call. Um we're going to be headed into executive, to the executive session. And um I would like to uh say to uh Councilwoman Caldwell Wilson that um I found working with you great. Um I know that um we uh disagreed on the animal shelter uh and I just think that um there's a lot of areas that we always uh disagreed on, but were still able to work together. And um I'm, you know, um I just hate that um my vote caused you to want to um reduce um to leave your title. Um that is my vote and I stand by it as I have stood by many of your votes and um never thought twice about still supporting um you with the right to cast your vote the way that you saw fit to to cast it. Um again, I would like to thank the people. And I would just like to say um to uh the administration that the uh the Johnson family came on and they talked to us about the abandoned property, how to expedite abandoned property. For so many nights on this dais, Councilwoman Vaughn have asked, please try to get information that would best serve our community in the Housing and Economic Development Department. Now, tonight, we learned that the abandoned property law was passed on the state. Part of it is on the council because we should have known that that bill had been passed. But now that we do know that the bill has passed, I would like to move expectatiously to create an ordinance to be able to introduce uh that bill to the residents in the city of Trenton to fast-track the sale of those abandoned buildings to the residents in the city of Trenton. And so I will be talking to Mr. Kaloji and um Mr. C. Daniels um within the coming days in reference to uh getting that ordinance um on the docket um for the next uh council meeting. Um again, I thank each and every one of you. Um we're going to go right into executive session because we do have an attorney uh waiting. And um I look forward to seeing um everyone on the call on Thursday. Thank you so much. Uh Ms. Penny Carter, we're gonna, could you read the resolution uh to that we can close the um civic comment and move the resolution to go into executive session?
A resolution authorizing the City Council of the City of Trenton to hold an executive session which which excludes the public. Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Trenton, this body will now convene an executive session that will be limited to consideration of an item or items with respect to which the public may be excluded pursuant to Section seven B of the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA ten colon four dash twelve. General nature of the subject or subjects to be discussed are litigation settlement, Dennis E. Scanapico versus the City of Tre- Trenton, Bankos, Bank, Bank three versus the City of Trenton, John R. Porcovit the third versus the City of Trenton, and underworkman's compensation, Hillary Roberts versus the City of Trenton, Victor Hernandez versus the City of Trenton, William Mulrain versus the City of Trenton, and Hare, Hare Ram Santiago versus the City of Trenton. State as precisely as presently possible, following is the time when and the circumstances of under which the discussions that conducted at said session can be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. The public is excluded from said meeting and further notice is dispensed with, all in accordance with Sections eight and four A of the Open Public Meetings Act. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Caldwell Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilman Michel- Michelle is absent. Councilman Rodriguez is absent. Councilwoman Vaughn?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilkins?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
Karen?
We will be back in the public uh to close the meeting out.
Do this.
Because there will not be a vote until Tuesday, I mean, excuse me, until Thursday.
To say leave?
Aye.
Alrighty, so we can go over to the executive uh portion.